Recording in progress.
Right, I would like to call to order and welcome you to the June 11th Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. And I would like to read into the record our new guiding principles in the actions that we are about to take. Are we raising the bar? Are we honoring the past, but not living in the past? Are we building connections with outside partners? Is the decision-making process positively in -- this is the old ones. Janine?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's go to this other page that has them on it. The new guiding principle. Are we raising the bar in all of our actions? Are we honoring the past, but not living in the past? Are we building positive connections with our community and outside partners? Is the decision-making process building a diverse, equitable, and inclusive community? My other sheet wasn't updated, so please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a published agenda this evening. Councilmember Ternary, do you have a modification or additional item you would like to add?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would like to add a business item and perhaps moving it to Business Item 7A, a resolution to increase the fees for conflict defense panel attorneys and judges pro temp.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Ternary and a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe to add a Business Item 7A and then move everything else down by a letter. And for a resolution increasing fees for conflict defense panel attorneys and judges pro temp. Any questions on adding that? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That business item has been added. Are there any other proposed amendments? Councilmember Rosa Pepe, go ahead.
No, Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and go for the approval of the agenda as amended.
Second. Councilmember Rosa Pepe made the motion, a second by Councilmember Deener to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I have a question, is that okay?
Certainly.
Okay, I know we weren't going through it. Now, that was for the one for the vehicles, you know, for those to get sold. Now, does the city get money for that, or does it go back into buying more?
It will go back into the vehicle. We fund what's called an ERNR Fund, Equipment, Reserve, and Replacement Fund. And so, any funds we get from the sale of those vehicles will go back into that fund to buy more vehicles.
That's what I figured, but I just wanted to ask that, yeah.
No problem. All right, agenda's been set. We are to our first citizen comment period, and this will...
Mr. Mayor, we need to vote on the...
We did not vote. Boy, I'm all over the place tonight. All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None, the agenda has been set for this evening. We're to our first citizen comment period for this evening. Anyone wishing to address the council, please step to the microphone. And if you're online and wish to address the council for anything on the agenda this evening, this would be the first citizen comment period, please use the raise your hand feature. And I am not hearing anyone, so I'm going to close the first citizen comment period. We're to our consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Deener, a second by Councilmember Ternary to approve the consent agenda as it's been presented. All in favor, please say aye.
I have a question.
Okay.
So, Consent Agenda E is an alternative location for council meetings? Do we have color on that?
I will give it to you in my mayor's report.
Thank you.
I'm going to look for direction from you guys. This is going to just give us the ability to do it if you choose, if that's your option.
Okay, I just want to know the color behind it, so thank you.
Yep.
That was my question.
All right, fair enough. Yeah, it's in my mayor's report.
Yeah.
All right. You guys did vote, all in favor of the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None, the Consent Agenda has been approved. We do not have any presentations. We don't have a public hearing. And now, we're to our business items, the first of which is the new item, which is a resolution increasing fees for conflict defense attorney and judges pro temp. Ms. Archer, this is you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with me this evening is our municipal court judge to answer any specific questions with regards to this item. Before you this evening, thankfully that you've added it to the agenda, we appreciate that, is a resolution that would increase the fees that we, the city, that pays for conflict defense panel counsel, as well as judges pro temp. As you are aware, our municipal court is obligated, under Washington state law, to provide counsel to individuals. And when they are indigent, the city pays for that cost. We have competent public defense attorney services provided by contract through a law firm, but there are moments in time when that law firm is conflicted from representing a particular individual under the terms of the services agreement. So, as an attorney, there are situations where we have a conflict of interest or a conflict that prohibits us from representing a particular individual. In the staff report, we have identified one such instance, for example, and the judge can speak to this as well. If there is, for example, an incident that involves two individuals, and both individuals are separately cited related to the incident, whether it's a motor vehicle issue or a domestic violence issue, one attorney cannot represent the two parties because their interests may be adverse to one another. So, we need two separate legal counsel to represent those two individuals in that context. And in that context, we then hire what's referred to as conflict public defense counsel. The city maintains, again, a contract with that law firm. I apologize, what's the name of the law firm?
LaCrosse &amp; Murphy.
LaCrosse &amp; Murphy. And then, we have panel counsel associated with conflict of interest. And we have recently, the court has recently experienced instances where they've had a challenge getting panel conflict counsel because of the rates that the city pays. I don't know if, you don't know if you want to speak to that?
Well, right now, I have four individuals who are in that status where we're looking for attorneys. And I keep coming back. After a couple of weeks, they come back before the court, and there's still no attorney. So, I'm asking LaCrosse &amp; Murphy, the law firm, you know, why are we not getting an attorney? And they just can't find anybody. I think some of you may have read the Kitsap Sun article about Bremerton Municipal Court and the issues that they're having. And I think they're having that all over the state of Washington, is where there are not a whole lot of attorneys and public defenders to go around. And there's, and we need to be, I guess, commensurate with what's going on in other places. And right now, up in Kitsap County District Court, it's a $475 flat fee for an attorney. And that's in all cases, not just conflict cases, but all cases that they appoint attorneys. So, up there, they have more of an economy of scale. You know, if you have 10 cases a month that you get paid $475 for, well, then you're making $5,000 a month just on doing that kind of work. If you have 20 cases, you're making $10,000. So, there's an economy of scale because they're up there all the time and they're handling cases. And so, what we had before was the pay structure for a conflict attorney was $55 an hour with a maximum of $550. But, like, one of the cases that I have right now is two young men who were racing, and they both got reckless driving charges. The LaCrosse &amp; Murphy took one of them, and then the other one has to have a new conflict attorney. Well, it's likely that that case is probably going to resolve, most likely, as a pre-trial diversion agreement. This is a young man in the Navy with no criminal history, and would probably be something that attorney would come in, talk to him, talk to the prosecutor, come to court, and probably an agreement would be made. They may take two or three hours to do that. They would get paid $100 or $150. And to bring somebody down from up in the district court, where most of the attorneys are, to bring them down to Port Orchard Municipal Court to handle a case out of their normal for 100 bucks is not very likely at all. In fact, we're having a very difficult time with that. And so, that's why we're here, is because I think if Kitsap County's paying $475, then we should be paying. And I think the maximum that we've formally done is $550. And I think that sounds like a good number because that would give incentive for people to come down to Port Orchard to handle these cases. Now, you may ask, well, how many cases are you talking about? Well, so far this year, we have had four. And last year, we thought we would have 13, but I don't think we had even 10. And so, we're probably talking about 10 cases a year or so, probably less than that. So, it's not a huge monetary hit, but we've got to make it lucrative to the people in order to get somebody to come down here. And the problem would be, in the end, is if we, if this individual who I just saw on Monday, and I sent it over for another two weeks to see if we can get an attorney, but at some point, either somebody's going to sue us for not providing legal counsel, or I'm going to have to dismiss that case as a violation of his speedy trial rights. And so, neither one of those are a good thing. So, that's why we're here in front of you, is to say, I think that it's best if we just do a lump sum of $550. And I think we may hopefully be able to get an attorney's office up that runs, that works up in district court, to come down here on a very limited basis to handle some cases, which is what we're needing. One of the things I always do is I take them first, and I accommodate them, and maybe a lot of times they're over Zoom, so hopefully, we can make it worth their while to do that. And that's what I'm trying to do.
And we're in a similar position with the judge pro temp role, which the staff report speaks briefly to judge pro temps. They serve when the judge is unable to serve. And to make our rate competitive, the judge is proposing increasing that to $100 per hour for judges pro temp, which is commensurate with what the county or district court is offering.
District court pays $110 an hour right now. It used to be 75, the same as what ours was, was, used to be 75, and district courts was 75 as well. But, they've upped theirs to 110. But, my job's a little easier than theirs, I think. So, $100, I think, is a good number for the judge pro temps.
So, by this resolution, you'd be setting those rates as described.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
Mr. Mayor, point of order. Aren't we supposed to make, weren't we reminded in recent training that we're supposed to make a motion before we start discussions?
I was going to make a motion.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So, you're absolutely correct, Councilmember Deener. I'm glad you listened.
Mayor, I move to make a motion to adopt a resolution setting the fees for conflict defense counsel and judges pro temp for the Port Orchard Municipal Court.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, a second by Councilmember Morrissey. And it isn't an absolute rule, but it's a good practice to do that.
Okay. I thought I saw some gears turning on some questions.
Yeah, it's a best practice that we do that before we start deliberation. And then, as the motion maker, if Jay wants to speak, he's actually entitled to speak first.
I'm comfortable. It's nice to see the judge again. Thank you.
It's good to see you all.
I just had a quick question. Is this service for both felonies and misdemeanors?
We only do misdemeanors in district court, or in municipal court. The felony structure is a lot more up in Superior Court. There, they handle all the felonies. And I think they're up to probably close to $2,000 a case at this point up there for the...
And then, just to make sure I understood, if we can't find representation, we've got to dismiss?
Well, we haven't got to that point yet. I think at some points, I know that some judges in Mason County are just pulling in attorneys and saying, this is your case, whether you like it or not. So, that's an option that I think is a nuclear option, but it may be an option, I don't know. I'm hoping not to get to that situation. So, we've had some interests, but when they saw the pay scale situation, they weren't interested. So, I'm hoping that this changes that, and we'll see what happens.
And then, one last question. Other than where you've got two defendants that were racing each other in the same car or whatever, what are some of the other examples where we might need to enact this?
Well, in a similar situation, I have a man and a woman who, she assaulted him, and then a few days later, he trashed her car. So, one of them's charged with assault, and the other one's charged with malicious mischief. And the attorney can't, you know, represent both people because they're... And the other is if the attorney previously represented, let's say, the attorney previously represented Fred Chang in a case, and then Jay Rosa Pepe assaults Fred Chang, and he can't then represent Fred, Jay Rosa Pepe because the victim is his former client. So, that's another situation where if there's a, if there's a situation like that where the victim was a former client of the attorney, then he can't represent the person who's charged with victimizing the former client. And then, there's also a situation if there was some kind of a dispute between the attorney and the client, where the attorney withdrew as a person because of a personal situation, then he wouldn't be required to represent that client again in the future. So, those are the normal ones. The normal ones are where it's two co-defendants. I mean, we just had one yesterday, two guys stealing from Safeway together, and they both get charged with theft. Well, the attorney's office, LaCrosse &amp; Murphy, can only represent one of those. And that's the normal situation. But, those are usually the big ones, and is form representation of a victim or co-defendants.
Councilmember Chang?
Out of curiosity, are we permitted to provide representation remotely?
Yes, we, Zoom is still a thing. And it's definitely, we get a lot of attorneys from Pierce County who represent clients in Port Orchard Municipal Court who never leave their office. And so, that happens quite often. You know, I read in that article that Bremerton's not necessarily doing that as much, but we're still doing it. And so, the Kitsap County District Court is still allowing Zoom hearings. And that was a big change in the pandemic. That's not going anywhere from going to the statewide conferences that the Supreme Court is attempting to make that more set in, you know, stone, and the rules promulgated, so that that is a thing that's going to keep on going on in the future. Which is great. I think it's great. And a lot of times, you know, I get defendants, it's just a, it's just a hearing where the defense attorney's going to want to continue the hearing, to continue to talk to the prosecutor. Well, instead of making that person take the whole day off of work and come in and sit in court, they just take a break at their work, and they dial in on Zoom, and we handle their case, and they go back to work. And so, it's, I think it's good for everybody, really.
I have a little question on that. Since you got the $475, and then we want to bump it up to $550, what about $500 or $525? Does that not sound good?
Well, the reason I did that is because that was our maximum that we had established here in Port Orchard, was that maximum of $550. So, I was just, I want to make sure that we are making it lucrative enough for someone to actually want to do it. That's really the issue is, because when they're up in district court, and they, you know, they can pop into a case, a court, and they can handle four cases. But, to have them come all the way down, or even, you know, and a lot of them will log in even from in the courtroom, or in the hallway up in district court, will log onto Zoom and handle a case in my court. So, but to make it worthwhile to do that, that's why I just said $550. I was, you know, when I was talking to some judges at the judges conference last week, I was thinking $1,000. I mean, I might, you know, I mean, something that makes sure that I'm able to get attorneys for these people. And for 10, for 10 cases over a one-year period, you know, even $1,000 didn't seem like, or $10,000 didn't seem like a whole, you know, too out of the realm of reasonableness. But, I think if we try $550 and it works, then great. And I'm hoping that that's what's going to happen.
Councilmember Ternary?
In your tenure here, Mr. Drury, what's the maximum number of these type of cases have you seen in a year?
Like I said, I don't think we've seen more than 10. Yeah.
All right. Any last questions? All right, you'd be voting on a resolution increasing fees for conflict defense panel attorneys and judges pro temp. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passes unanimously. Judge Drury, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you all.
For coming and visiting us tonight. It's great to see you here. And Chief, I know you have something too. Your item was on consent. You're more than welcome to take off also. All right, we're on to our new Item B, which is Adoption of an Ordinance Amending Port Orchard Municipal Code Sections 10.12.460 and 10.12.500 regarding parking regulations. Mr. Ryan, this is you.
I'm actually going to take this one this evening, Mr. Mayor. I put it together with Mr. Ryan's staff. So, before the council this evening is an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code Sections 10.12.460 and 10.12.500 pertaining to our parking regulations. If you take a deep dive into that chapter 10.12, you'll see that that is our comprehensive code relating to parking, stopping on our rights of way and roads. That code is frequently updated to add new streets that are added to our street system, and the associated parking regulations related to the addition of those streets. Staff routinely audit the inventory of staff, excuse me, of streets. And then, we make corresponding code modifications to list those streets in the code. So, this ordinance does two things. One, it makes that update. And then, second, we recently identified a few stalls, I believe it's three stalls, in one of the parking lots down on the waterfront that the city patrols pursuant to an interlocal agreement with the Port of Bremerton. And those three stalls were not currently addressed in the code section 10.12, in Chapter 12.12, such that our parking enforcement would be able to enforce those three or four stalls. So, this ordinance, by the second step, makes that modification to add those, reference to those three or four waterfront stalls, so that we can also enforce that. So, those are the two large concepts that are dealt with in this ordinance, and I'm happy to stand for any questions. You will see ordinances like this a few times each calendar year, where we update our street inventory. So, this is the first of many of these to come.
Councilmember Warden?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending POMC Chapter 10.12 regarding parking, stopping, or standing in the city.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Warden, a second by Councilmember Ternary. Anyone wish, have any questions regarding? Councilmember Deener, go ahead.
Yeah, just an observation. I wasn't familiar with the location of some of these streets. So, in the, I know we don't do these very often, but in the future, could we have location maps that shows where these streets are?
For the new ones or for all?
For the new ones.
For the new ones.
The new changes in the future.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the red line.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, you'd be voting on an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code Regarding Parking Regulations. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the ordinance passes. We're to Item C, Adoption of an Ordinance Modifying Port Orchard Municipal Code Chapters 2.04 Pertaining to City Council Meeting Rules and Procedure. Ms. Archer, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, before you this evening are two parallel items addressing the procedures the council uses for operation and conduct of its meetings. The first of those two items is an ordinance that will modify Chapter 2.04 of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. That chapter is the current home for the bulk of the city's regulations with regard, or the city council regulations with regards to the conduct of your meeting. In large part, that chapter was adopted in the '70s and has not been touched. So, this is an initial pass responding in part to suggestions the council had at its retreat, or requests the council had at its retreat, to address specific issues. And then, in parallel with that exercise, as I walked through the 1976 chapter, I noticed a few things that needed updating with regards to changes in law, and a few suggestions that the clerk's office and myself and other administrative staff evaluated and included in this ordinance as a suggestion to the council. I want to make very clear that Chapter 2.04, as all of the municipal code is, but in particular, Chapter 2.04 is born out of the city council's desires. So, you are in charge of this code section, or this code chapter. And your meetings are run however you deem appropriate, and that is codified at 2.04. And then, in parallel, the resolution we'll talk about in a moment. So, when I make suggestions with regards to modifications, you are free to take them, leave them, reject them. That is entirely your purview. And if there's ever a legal risk issue that I'm making a suggestion about, I will flag that for you in a confidential memorandum or in an executive session. But, I'll very briefly walk through the modifications that this ordinance makes, and in particular, flag the ones that I have introduced as opposed to ones that you have requested. So, first, currently, in Chapter 2.04, the only language in the existing code that relates to public comment is found in the schedule of your meetings. And that schedule of your meeting had two public comment periods, but it had no reference to any restrictions as to the content of public comment in either of those periods. My understanding was the council's desire was to remove the second comment period and consolidate it into one public comment period. And so, one of the modifications this ordinance would make is to strike that second comment period. Additionally, I understood there to be discussion from the council retreat with regards to adjournment and the concept of adjournment. And I've included in the packet materials about the concept of adjournment to aid in your evaluation. The 1976 language in the code used essentially verbatim Robert's Rules as a concept for adjournment, which means a motion to adjourn, meaning to cease today's meeting, is well taken at any time. And this is consistent with Robert's Rules, as we may have heard during the training. You could, any member could make a motion to adjourn at any time, even if there's a motion, another motion pending, because that's a priority motion. And that's what the language in the previous code was intended to mean. You had the right to make a motion to adjourn at any time. There was additional information or additional language in the code with regards to adjournment that called into question whether or not a motion to adjourn was actually required for your meeting to end. Under Robert's Rules, a meeting may be adjourned by the chair when business has concluded without a motion. That is authorized under Robert's Rules. But, practice of the city and some of the language in the previous code implied, if not required, the chair to entertain a motion that the chair themselves could not make for adjournment in order for the meeting to cease. One of the operational issues that we find with that is when we come back from an executive session, for example, that requires everyone return to the dais and actually entertain a motion to adjourn. Whereas, if we referred just to Robert's Rules, the meeting could be adjourned by the chair without a motion from the council because the business has concluded. And so, the proposed modification to the ordinance, understanding the council was seeking clarity as to what adjournment is and when it can occur, would do a couple of things. It would remove the reference to Robert's Rules in its strict terms, and simply, we understand that Robert's Rules is the rule of the meeting. But, it would also expressly allow the chair to adjourn the meeting at the conclusion of business without a motion of the council. And that would only be able to be exercised when business has concluded. If there were any remaining items on the agenda, it would not be within the chair's power to adjourn the meeting. The other aspect of adjournment that our existing code did not address that I wanted to sort of support, because it's also another helpful tool that a lot of agencies use, is the secondary concept of adjournment is to cease the meeting and move it to a date certain. And this is something that occurs primarily in smaller agencies, but when we do not get a quorum present, staff oftentimes struggle with re-noting the meeting, since we are required by law to have the council set the schedule. So, if we don't have a quorum present, we don't have a quorum to set a new meeting date. One of the tools we can use under the Open Public Meetings Act is to provide delegated authority to a staff person or to the chair to adjourn the meeting, meaning to cease the conduct of the meeting in that moment, and set it for a date certain. Agencies take a wide variety of approaches to this, but it is fairly common for the city clerk to be given the authority to adjourn a meeting when a quorum is not present, meaning no one was able to get here because of traffic or whatever reason, to a date certain, giving her that administrative authority to move it without having to come back to council to set the next meeting, causing unnecessary delay. So, I've injected clarity with regards to that process to officially delegate to the clerk the ability to adjourn a meeting in that, in the, under the... the ability to adjourn a meeting in that, in the, under the terms of that term in that context. And please interrupt if there's questions. I know this is a lot of information. The third request that I understood council to be making related to the removal of council sponsors from our legislative materials. Ordnances have historically had a council sponsor listed, and we understood that that wasn't necessarily something the council needed to see moving forward. As we thought this through, staff and I discussed sort of the useful information that comes out of having a council sponsor and other alternative ways to communicate that to you and to members of the public. And one of the thoughts for future legislation was including on our agenda cover bills a historical recitation of where a particular piece of legislation has been. So some agencies say this item was at the Public Works Committee on this date. This item was at the work study on this date. So we would list that as an informational item on the agenda bill so that you can track where pieces of legislation have gone, to the extent that they've gone somewhere before they came to you. All right. So those were the three concepts I understood the council was looking to modify. Now, very briefly, the items that I have added. First, I've suggested a modification to 2.04-020, and this is in part due to language, excuse me, language that was obsolete, as far as I understood it, as it relates to the council's practices. There's a clause that said the council may compel the attendance of absent members in such a manner and under such penalties as may be prescribed by ordinance. My understanding is that that clause was never used, and again, this had not been amended since many decades ago. So one of the activities or one of the exercises I undertook was to modernize the language and remove that, suggest a removal of that clause. Similarly, I suggested the wholesale removal of two sections. One, 2.04-070, which is presentation of subjects. The idea that no member shall speak more than twice on the same subject without permission of the presiding officer. Robert's Rules already provides parameters with regards to the order in which you speak, meaning you are, you were supposed to cycle through until everyone's had an opportunity to speak before you go around for another round of conversation. But this was sort of an additional requirement that this city, as far as I understood, hadn't had it used in many years, and this hasn't been amended since 1966. So since Robert Rules already provides the necessary parameters with regards to ensuring everyone is entitled to speak, I suggested it be removed. Again, 2.04-090 is another similar one, where there's language in the code with regards to a fine for every officer who fails to attend meetings. And in this context, officer, as far as I understand it from the adoption, was intended to refer to employees, directors, as opposed to you. One of the other aspects of my presentation this evening is a proposal that the council consider adopting a protocol manual. So as it relates to fines amongst each other for certain aspects of conduct, that's where this, that concept would live. But again, I don't believe this concept was ever used, applied to other council members. People can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this was something that was at some point enacted to penalize staff members. And one, it wasn't ever utilized, and two, from a legal perspective, I wouldn't advise doing that. So I would suggest we remove that. And then, I think that is all. There are additional minor modifications I'd suggested sort of for added clarity, and those are listed in the staff report, which is found at pages 68, 67 and 68 of your packets. So I'm happy to stand for any questions. Again, this is the first part of our conversation this evening about council rules.
Councilmember Rosepi.
Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending POMC Chapter 2.04 Regarding City Council Meetings.
Second. By Councilmember Rosepi, and a second by Councilmember Fenton. Go ahead, Councilmember Rosepi.
I'd like to amend the motion, if I could, at this time. I'm just trying to follow procedure. That we have a second citizen's comment period at the end of the meeting. If we're trying to be, take all comments, I understand why we're moving people up at the beginning so they don't have to wait through the meeting. Conversely, anybody that comes into the meeting late or has a question about our discussion, it would allow them an opportunity to also talk. And so I would like to make that amendment to this.
For clarity, you're making a motion to add a second citizen comment period.
Yes, yes.
That's, I believe, what I heard.
Yes.
I'd like to second that motion.
There's a motion on the floor from Councilmember Rosepi, seconded by Councilmember Morrissey, to add a second citizen comment period at the end of the meeting. Is that clear?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And is, questions about that amended motion?
That would be for anything anybody wants to talk about.
Both of them would be.
Both of them would be, yeah.
Get the traffic light, yeah.
I like it, too.
Just to clarify the nature of the motion, so the section of code where the comment periods previously lived was 2.04-060, and that's page 70 of the packet. So as I understand the motion, we would re-insert.
Number 11.
Number 11, which is now missing.
That's correct.
So we would, so it would come before executive session.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Questions about that?
That's the amended motion.
There are the amendment we're dealing with at this time.
Only the amendment, yeah.
Aren't we glad we did that training?
It's tough on me.
All right. We'll be voting on the amendment, which is to add a second citizen comment period at the end of the meeting. All right. All in favor of that amendment? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the amendment passes. Now we're back to the main motion. Anyone wishing to address the main motion? Questions or comments?
I think it's in line with what we've talked about.
So too. All right. You'd be voting on an ordinance modifying Port Orchard Municipal Code pertaining to city council meeting rules of procedure. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, I'm sorry I didn't get this comment, and I'd like to, besides council's input, also thank Charlie and staff for their input in cleaning up this language. It's, I won't say it's long overdue, but certainly with new council, it's a new set of eyes, and I think it's timely. So thank you.
That passed unanimously. Now we're to Item D, which is a continuation of the Charlotte Archer Show.
Thank you.
And which is Adoption of an Ordinance Amending Resolution 030-16 Pertaining to the Rules of Governing Public Comment at City Council Meetings. Ms. Archer.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, before you this evening is the parallel action item, which is a resolution amending a previous resolution the council had adopted, enhancing the rules that the council had governing public comment. So at some point in approximately 2016, the council took action separate from the code section we just described to, by resolution, adopt a policy associated with citizen comment periods. And that, those rules set expectations for public comment, consistent with Washington and federal state, or federal law. As we've mentioned before, under the Open Public Meetings Act, until very recently, there was no requirement that your business meeting contain any public comment period. However, the city of Port Orchard had always embraced public comment and invited public comment far more extensively than you are required to do under state or federal law. However, this, this city, as every city that offers public comment, found a benefit to providing parameters around those public comment periods, which you are authorized to do, which you are authorized to do both under the Open Public Meetings Act and under all applicable state and federal jurisprudence, including any jurisprudence interpreting the U.S. Constitution and the First Amendment's Free Speech Clause. So the rules that were previously established for the public comment period included two periods for public comment, one at the beginning, one at the end, with the first being restricted in content, which you are, again, authorized to do, and limited to only items on the agenda. There's a, there was a temporal limitation as well of three minutes, and then there was a overall temporal limitation of 30 minutes maximum, which means we go three minutes, three minutes, three minutes, until we reach that 30 minutes, and then we are done with public comment. And in the event there was a need for additional public comment, the council, as with all of your policies, again, they're yours, you could modify them, would offer as an alternative to folks who were unable to speak within that timeframe, to return for a council committee meeting or a study session, or council had, as you always do, had the option to extend the public comment period. And to be very clear, you do. You have the ability to suspend your rules, that requires a supermajority vote, to suspend your rules and extend the public comment periods. The mayor does not have the ability to do that. It's only the council. So whomever is chairing the meeting cannot simply waive any of the requirements that you've established that would violate the law. So flash forward to what we are doing this evening. The policy requests that I understood coming out of the council retreat was to eliminate the second public comment period and to remove the content restriction on that first public comment period, which again is only found in this resolution, not in the municipal code. So that's why we're doing this as well, because that's how we remove that content restriction on the first public comment period. So as drafted, the resolution does the things I've just described. It now removes the second comment period and removes that content restriction. It also adds something that I would suggest the city council consider utilizing, which is subpart five. Speakers present in person will be heard prior to any speakers appearing via the online platform. This is a method I've found some agencies benefit from as far as sort of honoring the folks who have come in person, giving them the ability to speak first. I would also note, however, I would say the majority of agencies that I work with are shifting away from any online commenting at this point because of the severe misuse of that platform for inappropriate purposes for public commenting that we simply are unable to police or stop. Per, once we open that platform or once we open that forum, we can't stop people based on content unless you have adopted a rule associated with them. The other minor modification that staff and myself are suggesting is with regard to written public comments. We're asking, or we're suggesting to the council that you entertain a time limit as far as when written public comments may be submitted to this clerk's office for consideration at that evening's meeting, and this is merely an operational request. The clerk's office has represented that comments received by 4:00 PM could very reasonably be distributed to the council, and after that time period, their operational needs may make that less possible or potentially impossible. So including that as a policy allows the clerk's office that, the needed clarity for the members of the public. And with that, again, this resolution is in support of the previous action, and I anticipate an amendment associated with the same amendment we just had moments ago, and I'll let you go through those machinations. But last point, I just want to flag again that the next part of this project that we've undertaken, myself and staff, primarily the wonderful members of the clerk's office, is to present to you a proposed protocol manual. And if you've, if you've taken a deep dive into your mayor's and council members handbook that AWC provides to each of you, there are some very useful points in there with regards to all the variety of conduct-related policies that the council could embrace that enable you to more effectively and efficiently operate your business meetings. This city has operated exclusively with Chapter 2.04 and resolutions like this historically, but I would say the majority of cities, small and large, are shifting to a more robust set of expectations for one another as we all sort of modernize both the needs that we have to operate our business as well as the way in which we exchange information with staff and we operate effectively as a municipal government. Those protocol manuals include everything from specific information to you about how public records requests will be processed, how you'll be notified of public records requests, where you go in the building to get your IT supplies, but then there's also codes of conduct and ethics-related regulations. There's a whole variety of topics that can be explored through a protocol manual beyond simply those that are addressed right now in 2.04. So at the next council meeting, we will be offering you some examples of protocol manuals that other agencies utilize for you to explore and evaluate and discuss. So apologies for that flight of fancy, but I just want to flag that this is just a step in the process of sort of modernizing our practices with regards to public comment. I raise it because the protocol manual is where you tend to find far more robust regulations with regards to the way in which public comments are handled. For example, if you wanted to prohibit profanity, there are tools we could utilize through a protocol manual, through something more detailed, that could enable us to potentially evaluate that and discuss that as an option. So I raise that to say this is sort of a Band-Aid on an issue, and we're offering a larger solution as we move forward for discussion in the future. This is not intended to address every potential problem with public comment periods that we face. This is merely doing what you've asked us, and then we're adding just a little bit.
Councilmember Trenary, I believe you want to make a motion, and if you crafted your motion to slightly differ than what's been presented, we could avoid amending that motion.
Ooh. Oh, the pressure's on me now.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution, amending resolution number 030-16, but also amending, pertaining to the rules governing public comments during regular city council meetings, but also adding, removing, or excluding the amendment of removing the second public comment section.
Second.
I think we got the intent. We have a motion by Councilmember Trenary and a second by Councilmember Fenton to accept staff's recommendation with the addition of the second citizen comment period at the end of the meeting. Is that the intent?
Preservation of that, yeah.
Yes. Councilmember Morrissey, go ahead.
You know, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion, amending the public comment period be limited to 60 minutes as opposed to 30. While it hasn't happened in my timeframe, I'm sure there will be a point in time where we have more than 10 of the 18,000 people that live here in this city that want to comment.
The, there's a, there's a motion. Is there a second to support that?
Well, we have the option at that meeting to extend it.
In the mo, in the moment.
In the moment, to 40, 40 minutes?
Point of order, I think the mayor just asked if there was a second. I thought the discussion.
We have to have a second.
No second.
There is a, there is a motion and a second.
No discussion.
Councilmember Warden brings up a good point. Also, this is typically your business meeting, too, and we have a hard stop in our code. Is it nine?
9:30. 30, that can also be extended.
Could be.
I got a question with that. I do like that because we can go a half an hour, but we all have to vote if we want to go farther, and maybe some don't want to keep going, you know, a half an hour more. So if it's already in our code that it's a half, at least an hour, then we don't even ever have to worry about that.
Councilmember Chang.
I'm actually confused by what I'm hearing. Are we suggesting that both of the public comment periods be limited to 60 minutes? Or are we suggesting that the total of both of them add up to 60 minutes?
I think that's the intent of the current language, is that each one of those could be 30 minutes.
Under the current policy, there's a maximum of 30 minutes per public comment period for a total of 60 minutes.
There is 60 minutes of public comment.
So we're already at a 60-minute.
So is the amendment to make both 30-minute?
60 minutes.
60 instead of 30.
Two hours.
Yes. But I guess I could amend my amendment to only have the first one, right? I can understand the second, but if you don't get your point across and you have comment on something that's on tonight's agenda, I want to allow the opportunity for those to speak. So I would be open to amending mine to just the first citizen comment period be 60, but yeah.
Motion makers offering a friendly amendment is the second willing to accept that friendly amendment.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosepi, go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate that Councilmember Warden brought up the idea that we can extend it, and I would continue to go with the extension so that we actually have an idea what's going on, as opposed to making it hard and fast right out the get-go. So that's my, my two cents.
Councilmember Chang.
I would vote against the amendment because I would actually prefer the 60-minute be for the second instead of the first comment session. So for that reason, I'm just going to vote against the amendment.
I was just going to say I share what Jay had to say.
Comments? Councilmember Trenary?
Yeah, I like the ability of the council to adapt on the fly. If we have that many public folks here that want to participate in the communication, we have the ability as a council to vote to increase the amount of time we allow, but I don't really believe that because of that, I don't believe we need anything hard and fast. So I would agree with Councilmember Rose Pepe.
Are there last comments?
And I also believe that, that we can somewhat manage people that are testifying so that, for example, if they're just repeating comments from previous speakers, we ask them to kind of limit their testimony, or if they've got testimony in writing, they can provide that to us and kind of summarize what it is they've got. So there, there's ways to help move testimony along without losing its importance or messaging.
That has been my experience when we have a contentious issue with a number of people that more than half of them are repeating something that the other, someone else has said.
Yeah, but you're also not letting them speak, right? Even if they're saying it over and repeating themselves, you can't just say, you, you can't tell them no. I mean, they have that right.
They're just encouraged.
Even if it's occurring.
That's correct. We're not telling them no, and we still have the ability to offer up and vote to extend our meeting at that point.
We're getting a little unruly here. Please wait to be recognized, and I think every, I think one last comments on, we're about to vote on the amendment. Councilmember Chang, go ahead.
I think that what I'm hearing is not only can we extend their, whichever, for the first or second, to a specific period of time, we could also extend it indefinitely, saying something like, everyone in the room. I mean, I don't think we'd want to do that, but we could have that ability.
All right.
I just would hope that we're always on the same page.
Let's try to have some control over the meeting here and wait to be recognized. Councilmember Morrissey, do you have a?
I was just going to say, I don't know that you can, right? That's why I'm trying to codify this in the rules. So that, that, that's my point. Again, I don't, it may never be used, but I always want to lay the foundation for the best possible outcomes.
All right. Any last comments on the amendment, which is to extend the first citizen comment period to 60 minutes, 60 minutes is what I heard. All right.
Can I point of order that for a roll call?
Certainly. Councilmember Deener? Councilmember Chang?
No.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
No.
Councilmember Morrissey?
Yes.
Councilmember Mary?
No.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
No.
Fails five to two. All right, we're back to the main motion. Councilmember Rosa Pepe, speaking to the main motion.
I have a question on the main motion, Charlie. Just don't, so with what we voted on in the previous one, and I didn't see that here, and if it's here, I apologize, a person may only speak at one, one time between the two citizen comment periods, correct?
Well, I think that may have actually been removed based on after-
One bite of the apple at each period.
Okay, so there is, I could speak twice at a citizen comment period. That's fine.
Beginning and then ask in our practice.
Okay, then I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make, clarify it, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Deener?
I wanted to make sure that, do we allow people to gift their time?
No.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that that was captured somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, that's another topic related to the protocol manual. There's, there's a whole variety of approaches. You could have City of Federal Way, for example, who routinely has multiple hours of public comment. They will have a representative of an organization be granted additional time, but the only way you get that benefit is if you have 10 other people in the room write their name down so that it's clear that person is speaking to avoid 10 other people speaking, and that's why they're granted an additional minute.
Yeah.
So there's a whole variety of approaches you can take, but typically you don't begin to evaluate, explore those until you encounter those problems, which you haven't encountered here.
Right, I think the county has something similar to that as well.
Councilmember Warden, you have?
Yeah, the reason why I like allowing on both ends was because the reason I said, let's have two, was because Councilmember Trenary put up a really good point, which is we're eliminating people speaking on items discussed during council if they want to sit through the meeting. So if we don't allow both, that would be, kind of take away from the point of having two, but that's all.
Other comments or questions about the main motion? We're back to the main motion.
Back to the main motion.
And that is what's been presented with the addition of the second citizen comment period. You have a comment or a question?
I have a comment about Exhibit A.
Okay.
So Exhibit A is on page 91. I'm looking at number two where it says towards the end, the speaker will be required to leave the podium and/or cease their comments. I, I don't know if that's worded the best because it means somebody could leave the podium but not cease their comments. So I've got a proposed amendment or some wordsmithing, and I don't know if it rises to the level of an amendment formally.
Since we're being formal this evening, why don't you?
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment to Exhibit A, number two, that reads, each speaker may address the council once for up to three minutes. Once the three minutes have expired, the speaker will be required to cease their comments and leave the podium if comments are given in person.
Second to that amendment.
Second.
By Councilmember Deener, second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. You wish, provide any comment on the?
Just that, you know, if they're here at the podium and they're in person, they obviously got to leave the podium, and if they're testifying online, then it's pretty simple, they just stop.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
Quick question, Charlie, do you see any issues with the re, okay, I just want to make sure because, just to let council know, I asked Charlie a question previously because I am very, I feel very strongly about obscenities during being directed at the council, and it was basically people have a certain right, and so in this case, I wanted to make sure that we're following this so we don't run into anybody having any type of regress against the, redress against the council. So thank you for that change.
I'm tasked with keeping the order and following these rules. It's, it's our job to, if you wish, to, to deviate from those rules.
Yeah, I understand.
Right.
Councilmember Chang?
Did you like the last phrase of the amendment and explanation? Was it something like that?
Okay, so number two currently reads towards the end, the speaker will be required to leave the podium and/or cease their comments. So somebody could leave the podium but stand over there and still be talking, which we've seen people walking away and continue to give testimony. This would clarify that if they're here in person, they would cease comments and leave the podium, and if they're testifying otherwise, it just, it just stops because they're online, right? We have control over that.
Okay, that's not what I heard the first time.
Okay.
Which is, which is, okay. Do you remember what he said the first time? Did anyone?
No, that's what, I wrote down what he said. That's what he said.
I think what you said is my understanding, and I, I would support that, but what I thought I heard was something about, and if it's in writing, they have to do something else. And it brought up the idea that we'd even be dealing with written comments with spoken comments.
No, that was a previous discussion.
Okay, maybe I missed.
And do we have an amendment on the floor to clarify that someone needs to cease talking and step away from the podium? Any additional comments or questions regards to that amendment? All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Amendment passes unanimously. Councilmember Deener, do you have something else?
I got another one. Number four, same page. If there appears to be a need for additional time for the council to receive input on a particular issue, the council may, by what action is my question here, move an item to council committee work study? Is there an action that's needed for that?
Yes, it would be-
Motion for referral.
This is, yeah, this is language that predate, this is existing language in your resolution, so I have never seen this utilized, but to the extent you believed that there was so much public comment interest that an item needed to be evaluated further beyond the 60 minutes, you would move it, move the item for referral to a date certain or to another meeting specifically. So it would require action by the council. It would, it would not require suspension of your rules because you've adopted a rule that allows you to do this. So-
So that's my question, is should that action be inserted into number four? So that it would read, for example, the council may move by referral an item to a council committee work study.
The point's well taken. I think the, the only dilemma becomes number three, which is a motion to extend the public comment meeting, the, the public comment period at that meeting. That would not be a motion for referral, that would be a motion, you would have to suspend your rules and then make a motion to extend the public comment period because you've established a 30-minute comment period by action.
And we have had, whether it's from public comment or from deliberations that weren't, it's not ready for a vote, and someone, you know, it hasn't been in our recent history, but in the past we-
Yes, referred it to committee.
Referred it to a committee.
Or staff.
Or a different, a future council meeting.
Sure, what grabbed my attention is work study, where we don't typically allow the public to comment for additional input. But this would authorize us to do that. I'm just curious, is there a motion needed to do that, or?
I'm just-
So it says-
No, that's a good point.
If we need additional input, we can send it to work study, a study session is what it says.
That's always your prerogative, you, that you could.
I, I think, sorry to interrupt, I think it would then require a motion at your work study where you would be suspending the rules at the work study to allow for public comment. So it would be a two-step process, but you would be making a public statement in the council meeting that additional public comment will be taken at X meeting.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear, because I know we do the same for sub, for the committees.
Right, right. And you, again, these are your rules, you can deviate from them as you want, and you have the opportunity to take public comment whenever you want. The only person up there who can't is the mayor. He, he has no power to authorize any members of the public to speak to you.
Councilmember Rose Pepe?
I'm, okay, confusion right now. So I understand what you're saying, but does that only pertain to the work study as opposed to this is being referred to committee, this is being referred to staff? You know, because work study usually is, is a formal agenda. In other words, that would, is that the only one that would require a vote? In other words, if we've heard enough testimony on an aisle, on an item, and John says that needs to go to the finance committee, and we sit here and go, yeah, we all agree, then it would come back to us as, in a, in a motion if there's something of note. So I'm kind of confused about, do we even need to have that, or does this only pertain to a work study saying a motion for it? Because in a lot of cases, we refer it to committee first, then the committee decides whether it's going up to the, to a work study or to the council. Some things die in committee.
Right.
And stuff, so I need some help clarifying.
So I can speak to our past practice, is if we're here at a business meeting at the dais.
Right.
We tend to be more formal.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And to move things, because it's, it's typically an action item that we're dealing with here. Sometimes it's a discussion item, and in the past, we haven't, you know, sometimes we're formal there, sometimes we're not, yet the work study's typically really informal. I'm looking for heads nodding. Are we, is this ready to go to the, the next week's council agenda, or do we want to send this back to the utility committee meeting? And you guys are going to kind of indicate, and we haven't historically been formal in that process there.
I think that the importance is that this policy, and this is language that has existed before, pertains to the receipt of public comment. So it, it's contemplating a universe in which you are inundated with public comment, whether it's on a specific agenda item or a con, a concept. You, as the council, decide, this is, this is not the forum for continuing this conversation, but we believe there is a better forum for it. We would like to make a motion to have public comment continued in X setting, and you could do so at a council committee meeting, just the same way you could do at a work study meeting. But it would require additional protocol at that committee meeting if you have rules that, which I don't think exist, but that could be in the protocol menu. The council committees don't take public comment. We're, we're suspending that rule for the purpose of this hearing will be our opportunity for additional members of the public.
So back to, I think what I heard from the mayor, and I just want to clarify this, and I, I understand we can suspend a committee, and I've, we've done it at work study where we've had people come in and testify. What I'm hearing right now from the mayor and from you is what Scott said is basically, we're up here, we're more formal, so if we want to move something, then that would take a motion and a vote.
Correct.
I'm good.
Yeah.
Sorry to bela, I appreciate everybody's patience with me.
Be clear.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And we're, we've dealt, we've dealt with all the amendments, correct? We're back to the, we're back to the main motion.
Yep.
All right, just bring this back.
Sorry.
Further questions or comments about the main motion?
Well, I think it's worth discussing. I mean, it might be-
Sorry, can't hear the comment.
There've been two proposed amendments, one failed, one passed. Okay?
And I think the last was withdrawn, or it wasn't fully made.
Wasn't fully made.
Yeah.
Yes, correct. Councilmember Morrissey had an amendment that failed. Councilmember Deener had an amendment that passed. Clerk's got it all, I'm certain of it, and if nothing else, that's why there's a recording.
And the main motion maker actually included the main amendment within his motion.
Yeah, yes, he did, to include the second citizen comment period. That's, that's already in there.
Grab Miss Wallace.
All right. Are we, are we ready to vote? No?
No.
Okay.
Okay, this is just a final, hopefully very quick amendment, providing suggested language for item one of Exhibit A. It would now be two public comment periods will be provided during regular council meetings, one to occur immediately following the council's approval of the agenda, and the second to occur at the end of the meeting before, or, sorry, before the council go to the order.
I think it's before the executive session.
It's actually ahead of the good of the order.
Good of the order.
You're right.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't think that actually needs to be stated as a new amendment because I believe that was the intent of the original motion.
Yeah, that was marked.
But that's helpful language. I think that's exactly what we all are envisioning.
That is what was intended. So you withdraw that motion since that's-
Well, I think it's-
They didn't make the motion.
Yeah.
You didn't make the motion, okay.
Yeah, that's the language that will appear because that's exactly what we were contemplating.
Okay.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Comment?
Well, yes, just a comment around number six and cutting off written public comment at four. I just-
Just so we can get it to you guys.
Is that early enough? I, I, if they, again, if we're at a topic that we're going to get plenty of them, am I going to be able to review that if it's cut off at four for her to be able to get it to me so that I can review?
Okay, we, it satisfies our process, you're, that's a valid point. It may not meet your process.
Right, I'm just throwing that out there, Dean.
Yeah, some of my agencies said it at noon, some the day before.
Councilmember Fenton, you have a comment or?
Yeah, so let's say we got seven comments, written comments, does that mean that we only see four out of the seven?
No.
No, okay, okay.
So she's saying 4:00 PM, right?
Oh, gotcha.
So if it's done at four for her, right, and there's eight of them, she's got to collate them, get them out to us, you know, it might be 4:30 by the time we get them. If I'm in a finance committee meeting that goes 40 minutes longer than it should have, or somebody else has one that night of, i, is that sufficient time for you to review pub, written public comment?
Your, it's your, it's your process. You tell us. We, we can get it to you, to you if it's submitted to us by five, according to Brandy, or four o'clock.
Well, before I make one, like what, I, I, what works for people? I don't know, should we say the day before? Should we say noon? Noon would work for me, right? But I don't know what everybody else thinks.
I'd like to ask Ms. Archer or Ms. Wallace, what's good for you?
She can comply with four. That's, it's about-
Oh, four o'clock's good for her?
Correct, but you're going to-
I, I hear you, I, I hear you. I, I hear you.
It's about you being able to read it.
Yeah. We, we had two meetings today prior to this meeting.
Oh, trust me, I'm, that's what I'm thinking about, yeah.
And you typically have a committee meeting ahead of the council meeting, so Councilmember Deener?
I was just going to ask, Charlie, what do you see more preponderance of with other I was just gonna ask Charlie, what do you see more preponderance of with other jurisdictions? Is it day before, is it noon?
It varies, I would say the majority is probably 4:00 PM, but I don't think this point has ever really been raised in conversation, that you then have to actually digest the comments. But again, I would say my, it ranges from noon to four, and I think I can think of one that's the day before.
Well, then I'll say, just to be fair to the process, that I think it should be the day before because my day is set, and if we have a committee meeting before, there's no chance that I'm going to read comments.
Make a motion.
Well, I'll let John make the motion.
Okay, yeah.
But we might get comments that are, here's a study I want you to read in advance of making a decision.
I appreciate the concern that is implying that council will have time to digest all the input that is provided by a certain time, but I think it might take away from someone's, obviously this is someone who's not coming in person, where they would have a better presentation. So they're sending something in lieu of being there. I think they have to send it with good faith that it will be seen. It's just sort of the way that sometimes people send us extremely long emails, you know, are we reading them?
Yeah, it might be longer than what you can-
Right.
-tell in three minutes.
I would, I would sort of lean towards, I would consider leaving it at four because, you know, we could see it, we could glance at it before a meeting.
Do you think somebody needs to make a motion or we need to move on?
All right, so I'll make the motion. I'd like to make a motion to amend number six here to be at noon the day of a regular council meeting.
Second.
Motion by, an amendment by Councilmember Morrissey, a second by Councilmember Warden, to amend the deadline for written comment to noon the day of the meeting. Is that what I heard? All right, to the amendment, do you have, someone have a comment? Go ahead, Councilmember Fenton.
Yeah, a comment on, I think if we did it the day before, I, I don't-
That isn't the motion.
Oh, no, that's what I was just saying, I'd rather do it at least by 12 o'clock. Yes.
Speaking to the motion of noon the day of, anybody have any comment or questions?
We can always change it if it becomes otherwise, so I think it's a good starting spot.
Okay, all right. We have a motion to change the written comment to an amendment, to change the written comment to noon of the day of the meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the amendment has been made. Brandy's got all kinds of red ink all over this thing now. All right, any more questions, comments, or amendments?
To the motion.
To the main motion. I'm questioning whether we should have given you guys that training. That's all good. All right, we're back to the main motion, which is to adopt a resolution amending rules governing public comment, which also includes two public comment periods in, at our business meetings. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passes. All right, we're to our last business item, which is item E. Brandy, is Noah in the audience? Okay, I'm gonna, he's had graduation commitments with his son, so he's popping in for this one item for us, which is approval of an agreement with Kitsap County Consolidated Housing Authority, DBA Housing Kitsap for 1406 funding. Counsel, or go ahead, Mr. Crocker, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Consistent with substitute House Bill 1406, the city council authorized the city to utilize a portion of the existing sales tax for affordable or supportive housing efforts. The city has identified a program through Kitsap County Consolidated Housing Authority, known as Housing Kitsap, to utilize these funds for the benefit of Port Orchard community. Housing Kitsap would be eligible for up to $43,200 for its home rehabilitation program, which provides grants for the rehabilitation of existing affordable housing to low-income households in the city of Port Orchard. As part of the process, Housing Kitsap is required to provide documentation, evidence in all expenditures, meet the criteria identified in the agreement, and will be submitted with each invoice. There is a budget authority in the 2024 budget already existing for funding of a program like this. Staff would recommend that the city council authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with the Housing Kitsap for substitute House Bill 1406 funding for the affordable housing.
Councilmember Fenton, go ahead.
I make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Housing Kitsap for the use of HSB 1406 funds for affordable housing in Port Orchard.
Second. Councilmember Fenton, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. So this is a program with Housing Kitsap. I know that there's a desire for us to do rental assistance, and Noah and I, it's been a little disconnected here with the remodel and vacations and everything, but it is our intent to work on an agreement for some future funding of, with these pot of dollars with, whether it be KCR, I know we've got Amike House getting close to being opened, and I'm hopeful that there'll be a qualified recipient, but this has been a long time in the works. You know, we contemplated this when we put the budget together to put these dollars, deploy these dollars to help some low-income individuals with some home repairs to keep them in their homes. So with that, questions or comments? Councilmember Trinari?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, on page 97, item number two, talks about the duration of this agreement, and is this correct, that this agreement will commence upon mutual execution and will expire on December 31st, 2024?
This is intended to do home repairs, and it's done. This is very similar to, we've done this at least one other time, maybe two, Noah?
Yeah, that's correct.
I understand that, but this is a six-month, essentially a six-month, one and done.
We want to do people's windows and roofs the summertime.
Thank you.
Yeah, it'll be done. And then if we chose to do a project like this again, it would require a new agreement, so, in the future. Councilmember Rose Pepe, do you have a-
I do have a quick question, both Mayor or for Noah. Out of the funds, do we have an idea of just how much the administrative costs are? In other words, for every hundred dollars, what's getting down to the people and what's being kept to, for administration? Just curiosity.
They're not charging anything, that's for certain, but, and Noah, can you speak to that, is that mattered in the agreement? I think there is.
There is some administrative, but I think, I think most, majority of the funding's going towards the actual homes themselves. We're trying to look to see in the previous agreement if we identified that when we paid.
My only curiosity in that is, is this a good way of showing people where their money's going? That's all. I can, it's not a point to belabor.
Thank you.
All right, other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so it appears that this is a two-year commitment or two-year agreement, not this particular contract we're voting on tonight, but it references 2020 and then 2022, this is now 2024. Will we be doing anything or looking to do something in 2025?
In the next biennial, so we have, that is referencing, we've done this in the past with this organization, and this is a new group of projects, okay? In the next biennial budget, we intend to work with KCR and try to come to an agreement with them. I would hope that we spread, it's, you know, you know, I'm gonna work with staff and we're gonna present with you, to you, the mayor's budget, and then ultimately you guys have to approve that budget. In the next budget, I am hopeful that we have more than one recipient getting some of these dollars. It's $60,000 a year that we collect, deploying about $40,000 and change here in this, you know, award of these funds. But I would like to see more than one agency, if, you know, so we don't have all the eggs in one basket. We want these dollars deployed, so it'll be part of the next budget that we're gonna start here in the next couple of months, we begin that budget process that ultimately you guys approve in, you know, in November. So, Councilmember Warden?
Yeah, $40,000, that's two roofs.
I specifically what they're-
I, I, no, I mean, I mean, it's ballpark, it's, roofs are outrageous. It's probably close to maybe a couple homes for windows. What's the, what's the difference when you evaluated rental assistance to keep people off the streets or homeless versus this?
I just, I just haven't had any, anybody, we've entered into at least two agreements with different agencies for rental assistance, and nobody's delivered, so the dollars didn't get deployed, okay? This is the second, possibly the third time we've done, Housing Kitsap identifies, you know, whether it's roofs, decks, windows, they, they go out and they have an application process, and they're pairing, many times they're pairing this with the county's CBDG dollars. They get an award there, and they're going out, and they just have a program that they, that's what they do. People submit an application, hey, I'm low-income, I've got these needs, I'm, for my repairs to my home, and so we're augmenting a program that Housing Kitsap already does with these dollars that always have to be spent in the city of Port Orchard, and whether the rental assistance or helping someone low-income repair their home.
Do you know why, when no one's reaching out for rental assistance in Port Orchard? I have no idea, I'm curious why. Does anybody on our council know who's been involved in that?
So first, the two failures we've had, one was with KCR, the first go-around, they had, they were having staffing issues. It's not that there aren't people to help, it's the agencies have been challenged to deploy those dollars for us, okay? And the second scenario was Kitsap Homes of Compassion was the agency, and they, they were going to rent a house, and we were, and they were going to basically operate a group home, and they couldn't find a house to rent. With the housing market the way that it is, we couldn't, they couldn't find a house anywhere. We spent a year, and you know, I know Councilmember Chang would send me listings from time to time, we couldn't find, they couldn't find a house to rent. So, so we failed to deliver those dollars via that contract, so, you know, like I said, we've got $60,000 a year, we want to deploy them, and, you know, this is just one opportunity, and I want to see us do some rental assistance out there. But, you know, the folks that provide these services have to deliver for us because we're not doing the actual work. Councilmember Chang?
Yeah, my understanding also is that the rental agreement that we have with KCR had certain stipulations where the rental assistance would be limited to anyone who had to be over 62 and/or a veteran. So we were eliminating, eliminated a subset of people potentially eligible to rental assistance in that first incarnation with KCR. Kitsap Homes of Compassion is also a great group, and they could not find a place that they wanted to use. I don't believe though this money has an expiration date by which it needs to be spent. We could, it could potentially be held on to.
And we have been holding on to it, yes.
Okay, so I, I just have a sort of, while I appreciate helping out people with low them with their house, I think the way this program is, it's giving a little bit too, too much money to too few people, and it's not even a loan. I know it's called a grant, but it's really basically, we're just giving them money for the repairs of their homes, we're not putting a lien on their homes, so we're not getting anything back from it. And I would prefer that we actually spread it out where maybe rental assistance, you have a limit of 2,000 per year per individual. And Amici House that Rob mentioned is certainly a worthy congregant living for young people. The last I heard is they may be ready to start in September of this year, so I would hate to spend all of our funds on, you know, this particular thing without having any leftover for something like Amici House or KCR if we are able to get a better contract with them.
Noah, do you, we know what the fund balance is by chance? I know we have dollars in this fund beyond the-
Yeah, as of, as of the end of April, we have $182,000 that's restricted for this purpose, affordable housing dollars. And so with this agreement, we'd only spend $43,000.
Yeah, we have, we have plenty of money to help other folks out if we can find an agreement and, then someone qualifies.
Well, it seems worthy, but I'm, I'm still gonna vote against it because I think the money should be saved for rental assistance.
Comments or questions? All right, you'll be voting on approval of an agreement with Kitsap Consolidated Housing Authority related to 1406 funding. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Nay. Nay.
So it passes five to two. All right, we are, we've completed our business items, we're, we have two discussion items this evening, and we're planning for an executive session at the end of the meeting also. So the first of our discussion items is Ms. Archer, and it's city council rules and procedures. So Ms. Archer, this is you.
All right, thank you so much, council members. For this evening's conversation, I am not share, it's still showing that version, so I apologize. Give a quick screen share. Okay, there we go. For this evening's conversation, I am presenting a training that I do for clients where I serve as general counsel and those that I serve as special counsel for the purpose of exclusively doing trainings like this across the state of Washington. This training focuses on the roles and responsibilities of the city council in a code city structure, and touches a bit on the difference between what the council's role is and the mayor's role. This training typically takes an hour, but I've been told I have 30 minutes, so I'm gonna try to go as fast as I've ever gone. And this training is usually very interactive, so to the extent there are questions, please pause and, or stop me and we can grapple with those. I have had a version of this in a form of a conversation with some of the newer council members, so some of this may be stuff that we've already talked about, but I'm just going to reiterate it, especially for those who haven't heard this training before. And we are going to talk about a wide variety of topics with regards to council roles and responsibilities. So some may seem jarring as far as how they fit in the concepts of council roles and responsibilities, but I'll do my best to tie it all together. So, if I can get it to start, there we go. Just as a context point, this presentation is focused on explaining sort of the underpinnings of your powers. As you know, all power associated with municipal government flows from the state, and you have adopted a mayor-council form of government, and you are a non-charter code city, and that is adopted at your municipal code. Mayor-council, we also refer to as strong mayor-council, is one form of government. Another in the state of Washington is manager-council, where the mayor is not a strong mayor, they're considered a weak mayor, and they are merely a rotating council member. And then the leadership of the administrative branch of the government is operated by a professional manager. So in our type of government, like federal and state governments, we have three separate branches, and we saw all three on display this evening, the legislative, executive, and judicial. The city council yourselves are similar to the state legislature, while the mayor is similar to a governor or a president and heads the executive or the administrative branch, and then the court is its own thing, it operates completely independent of us by design. All three powers are governed, and the powers that each branch have are governed rather by state statute. So powers of the city council are generally exercised by a majority of the city council in an open meeting, and we've discussed this at length. Each individual member of the council has no power, but acting collectively, you have powers. You have the right to speak in accord with your city council rules and to cast a vote. That is your, the ultimate power that you have as an individual. I will note here, following your own rules related to decorum, related to the conduct of your meeting is something that we emphasize when we give this training, and typically it's, it's coupled with the Roberts Rules training that you received at your last meeting. As I also mentioned this evening, the staff and I are suggesting a more robust protocol manual to give you more of a framework, and we'll continue to have that particular conversation in a future meeting. While all of you have the powers of voting and of conducting the meeting as you'd see fit, the mayor's power in our meetings is actually relatively limited. They serve as chair, and they enforce the rules that you have enacted. If you don't like a rule, as I mentioned earlier this evening, the majority of the council has the ability to change that rule. You dictate how your meetings proceed. Outside of meeting context, individual council members do maintain their rights and responsibilities as an individual citizen, but as we've discussed at length in other opportunities, other instances, your actions even as a private citizen can be imputed back to the city in certain contexts. So they, essentially your actions have consequences depending on how your individual rights are exercised, and if there's ever a question about that, please do not hesitate to ask. So general division of labor as it relates to day-to-day activities of the city, the mayor's role, general supervision over the administrative affairs of the city, and the mayor is operating within the parameters that you have set within the budget and the ordinances that you have enacted. He is administering those and overseeing staff's administration and implementation of those directions. He administers contracts, meaning you have adopted a contract, he signs it and then ensures that it is enforced and lived up to. He can administer essentially civil litigation, but he cannot instigate litigation, that's solely the purview of the council, you would have to vote to enact or off- That's solely the purview of the council. You would have to vote to enact or authorize the commencement of litigation. But once the litigation is commenced, the mayor has the ability to administer the litigation up to and including sometimes the resolution of the, of the litigation through motion practice or things of that nature. In contrast, the city council's power is to build the systems in which the mayor operates. You create the administrative structure through the budget process. You create which departments exist, you create which employee positions exist within each of those structures. You can address the health, safety, and welfare needs of the city through an exercise of your police powers. And this is a lowercase p. You enact laws that protect the public, public health and safety. And you also approve contracts. Your power is to approve contracts, whereas the mayor's power is to implement those contracts. One of the concepts we emphasize in this, in this training is as you are developing and implementing legislation, we talk about sort of the methodology that we utilize for implementing and developing legislation. And typically legislation is, comes from staff because we are the ones that are identifying the operational needs of the agency. But there are times when you yourselves may have legislative goals and priorities and those are usually communicated through the retreat and then implemented by staff. But one of the important things that we like to emphasize in this training is the concept of that no surprise rule. And you may have heard this reference during the Roberts Rules training. Sometimes she references it because it actually comes from Roberts Rules. The idea that we've all collectively agreed to avoid surprising each other because surprises do not effectuate efficient and productive business operations of the city. So avoiding surprising staff, the legislative body, or the administration. So walking something onto the dais, for example, is not something we take lightly because we are surprising you with something that wasn't in the published agenda. Likewise, to the extent there's a topic you're looking to talk about, we, we recommend and the MRSC Handbook for Elected Officials recommend not surprising each other from the dais, but rather pre-notifying staff in particular so that we can be prepared to discuss the topic and prepared with information. Enabling that each other are treated with that level of respect so that we're not surprising each other can enable us to have more productive meetings and enable us to all get this information at the same time. As it relates to specific expenditures and contracts, again, mayor signs contracts, supervises performance, whereas you approve the contracts and you are setting budget authority for city expenditures. While the mayor has no authority to speak for and bind the city unless he is specifically authorized by ordinance adopted by you. So the mayor's power of binding authority flows from the city council. Your authorization can take two forms, one specific, the specific approval of a particular contract or piece of legislation. Or oftentimes as cities grow, more and more the council enables, enacts things that delegate authority in large chunks. This city, for example, has delegated authority to the mayor for the development of job descriptions. There are other cities slightly larger than you that go even further and delegate to the mayor hiring authority with regards to the creation of certain positions. So there are things we can do to build additional delegation of authority while still preserving your legislative autonomy. As it relates to staff and personnel, this is one of the more challenging aspects of the division of labor. So I'll, I'll speak to this a little bit more deeply. The mayor as the head of the administrative arm of the city hires, fires, and directs compensation and working conditions for the individual employees. But he must do so, or the mayor must do so in conformance with a few other outside contextual issues. One, the civil service system, which we have for our police department, which sets certain parameters in order to avoid nepotism or favoritism in the hiring of police officers. Collective bargaining agreements obviously set parameters that the mayor must operate under. And then key amongst this is he operates within the budget that you establish. So you'll see in our budget, each year we pass it, there's a salary range associated with each position. The council does not say, Dennis, you get paid this amount. The council says, here is the range for Dennis's salary and the mayor has discretion within that range. And then there are times when councils required by the state statute or by local jurisdiction to confirm a particular appointment. Other than where your code has given you confirmation authority or state law, there is not automatic confirmation associated with the hiring of employees. That is vested with the administrative body for effective and efficient operations. City council, in contrast, again, you are creating the parameters within which the mayor is operating. You are creating the civil service system, you are creating the rules associated with the civil service system. You are creating and directing the way in which we negotiate our, our collective bargaining agreements and then ultimately approving our collective bargaining agreements and the mayor is implementing. And then the largest one of all is the budget. You utilize the budget to direct resources to where you believe staffing needs to be emphasized. So if you believe there to be a dearth in our code enforcement efforts, you utilize the budget to fund additional headcount for the code enforcement process. The mayor then utilizes that funding to implement. So these are the ways the council oversees the structures of our personnel while the mayor is actually implementing that on the ground. So there are procedures in place, and I believe we talked about this before, with regards to sort of where, as it relates to personnel, there is a sharing of information by the mayor with regards to how personnel are implementing the direction that you've received. One of those ways is you receive briefings from the directors at your council meetings. Other opportunities include direct communication with the directors of the departments. There are reasons that the mayor sets those parameters for communication between the council and individual staff members, particularly when you get any lower than director levels, primarily for two reasons. One, the idea of avoiding the appearance of impropriety and two, the concept of undue pressure. So for example, one of the key reasons that we cite to sort of emphasize for council members, the, both the conflict of interest issue, but also sort of the relationship with staff issue is, let's say, for example, you're pulled over by a police officer. You, as a council person, have budget control over that police officer's job. And so the idea that you have the ability to exert undue pressure is one of the reasons that structurally the administrative arm is separately situated from the budget arm. You do not have control over that individual employee because the mayor could, could move that person around however he saw fit, but you do have that budget authority. And so we keep those two arms separate in primary, one of the motivating purposes, to ensure that we have that protection from the efficient and effective operation of the administrative arm, protected from the legislative, the overarching powers that you have. That's a very large example, but those undue pressure issues can occur on a very, much more micro level. And so this is an important thing to emphasize and, and take to heart. And if there's ever questions with, with regards to this, please do not hesitate to ask. It's that power imbalance that makes it difficult for employees to say no or to otherwise give you information that may be adverse to the interests, the interests you have or the basis for the question. And that's why we typically see parameters set where director level employees are available to you as a resource, but anyone below the director is not. So who runs the city after we have all that context? Again, I encourage you to dive deep into that MRSC Mayor Council Handbook and the AWC Handbook because there are some very important tidbits in there with regards to not only the legal parameters of your roles, but some really useful operational tips and tricks from years of experienced elected officials. It's important to recognize that it is not the role of the council member to administer city affairs. You set the policy, but it is either the, either the mayor or a city manager, mayor in this case, who actually implements those policies. This is directly from that handbook. This means it is not the role of a council member to supervise city employees on the job or become involved in the day-to-day administration of city affairs. This can often be a source of conflict between executive and legislative branches of city government. And importantly, can, can, can lead to issues as listed here with regards to impacts on employee morale, claims of unfair labor practices, employee retention issues, and other issues within the organization. So these issues may not automatically lead to litigation, but one of the big legal risks that we are identifying with regards to conflict where council and executive may be conflicting over the way things are administered is the departure of staff when that sort of turmoil is created by one side overreaching. All right. So the council's most important functions, we'll touch briefly on this, I think I'm at 30, but I'll go faster. You are adopting policy. That is your primary function. You use the ideas that you have from a variety of sources and you develop and implement policy. You consider the merits of proposals and you analyze your community's needs. But keeping in mind that there are a variety of you representing a variety of constituents for a reason. So oftentimes you may not all agree, but you act as a majority. The budget and your comprehensive plan are two powerful policy tools that you adopt by ordinance. All right. One other topic to briefly touch on is the idea of responding to constituent complaints or constituent concerns. Residents will often contact you with those big ideas that they want you to implement when they have a problem or otherwise want to be heard. We want to always remember that you lack the individual authority to take action or make representations on behalf of the city in your individual capacity. You cannot bind the city mechanically or appearing to bind the city can potentially create legal risk. So we, we encourage you to avoid making any promises in those interactions with individuals. Instead, what we recommend is that council members may refer a particular matter to the mayor, who can then assign it to the appropriate staff member or allocate resources to address that issue, raise the issue at city council meetings to gather information for future action. But keeping in mind that no surprises rule and the idea that we pre-arrange issues so that staff can actually come prepared to speak to issues. And to discuss complaints or performance issues of particular public officials in executive session. Those are tools that we can utilize to respond to constituent complaints. Very briefly, because we just had training on this, one of the other tips we, we speak to is our conduct in meetings. These council meetings are your business meeting. And the way in which we ensure that our business meetings proceed in a professional and effective manner is adopting and implementing and utilizing rules of procedure. Running the council meeting in a business-like manner to get the people's work done. We, we always want to emphasize, and I think I've said it multiple times this evening, this is your meeting, not the mayor's. The mayor's power is relatively limited in this context. And he does not have the ability to extend even the public comment period if an individual wants. That's not the chair's ability. The city council meetings are your workplace. And so setting a civil tone is also imperative, not only to the successful operation of your meeting, but as I mentioned just a moment ago, staff are watching. They understand your civil, the civil tone that you take is an indication of the health of the city. This is something that we recommend, again, utilizing rules of protocol and procedure to assist you in ensuring that those meetings are proceeding in a professional manner. One of the tools we learned about in Roberts Rules training that we also emphasize is the use of a point of order. And I noticed that it was used multiple times this evening to great effect. So the chair is primarily responsible for enforcing the rules, but he merely rules on the points of order. It is for your, for the council members to police yourselves and the way in which you choose to conduct your meeting. But the point of order should not be seen as a punitive tool. It is merely a tool to assist you in ensuring that we get out of here before 9:00 PM and ensuring that your meeting is the most effective, effective and efficient business meeting. So very briefly, a couple of other issues related to your roles and responsibilities I want to touch on. And again, I'm always happy to discuss these more at length. Your, the conflict of interest concept is embedded in state statute and it is imperative that you know it and know it well. Gifts and compensation with regards to your role include, prohibited gifts and compensation, include accepting gifts from members of the public, but primarily include authorizing contracts that give you any sort of personal benefit. Another aspect of this is the idea that you're gaining confidential information as a result of your role and your ability to disclose that confidential information outside of this setting is prohibited in two ways. One, it is prohibited by state statute and you can be personally liable in the form of a monetary penalty associated with disclosing confidential information. But then second, a lot of the conversations that we have where confidential information is provided also fall under what's referred to as the attorney-client privilege. And as I mentioned moments ago, none of you individually have the power to act, meaning none of you individually have the power to waive that attorney-client privilege. So in the event someone were to disclose attorney-client privileged information, the city would be able to claw back that information if one individual council member was the disclosing party. Because there's not an effective waiver by only one of you. It's, it's, it requires the motion of the, the council and, and the full council, excuse me, the, a majority of the council to waive that confidentiality. Just very briefly, an additional point on conflict of interest. The conflict of interest concept as it relates to contracts can apply both to you-appointed municipal officers, so those on the dais, as well as your family members. And that's something that folks are not always aware of. And you may, you may not, you're prohibited from having a financial interest and you may not use your position to secure privileges. This is that getting pulled over by a police officer moment. But this is also, you know, Public Works employees who happen to be mowing on your street and you say, hey, could you also come over here and get this patch as well? Those sorts of moments in time are when we see conflict arising with regards to the provision of the state statute that prohibits you from using your position for special privileges. All right. So what, what do you have the power of when it relates to staffing? Let's talk a bit more about that. So you have budget control and I think one of the things I want to emphasize is that this is imperative in your right of inquiry. If there is something that troubles you, your first and foremost outlet is the budget and is allocating resources to that particular topic. Funding a study, finding a consultant, using your funds to address the issue. You'll see during budget cycle, staff presenting you and the mayor presenting you in the mayor's budget, these are the parameters that we are suggesting to fully fund existing service levels. And if you are expecting there to be a heightened service level as it relates to code enforcement or as it relates to park improvements, the budget is the way in which you make that happen. Absent budget authority, the mayor's hands are tied and staff's hands are tied. So your responsibility is to ensure that your endeavors are adequately funded. Another tool you have is an ethics code or provisions of the personnel policy. And this is again, something that we would utilize in a protocol manual. There are many, many agencies that have adopted robust ethics rules because you are the only body that polices yourselves. So you technically could never be subject to a personnel investigation under the city. You are not employees in the way in which we would be able to punish you if one of you chose to discriminate against an employee. You police yourselves. And so an ethics code is the way in which councils choose to police themselves and choose to police their own conduct. That's a useful tool that some find useful. One last piece is the role of legal counsel. So there is no specific authority for the council to hire legal counsel outside of and separate from the city attorney. But there have been, there has been case law associated with this, so I just provide that as a moment of context. My role as the city attorney is to advise the agency, and we've talked about this briefly. It's the agency theory. I'm not the mayor's attorney and I'm not the council's attorney. I'm everyone's attorney. And that can sometimes lead to conflicts. If the council and the mayor have a disagreement about a legal risk issue, there may be a time in which I would have a conflict in giving advice to both sides. And there are cases, in particular the Black Diamond case, where that exact issue arose, where the mayor had a budget, the council had their own budget and conflict was arising. In that instance, the conflict of interest rules that we spoke about earlier this evening and the judge mentioned would necessitate that I would actually be, have to withdraw from representing either. So new attorneys would pop up for both sides and there is precedence for that occurring. But that is an instance that is rare. And so I use this moment in time to emphasize that my role, as codified in your municipal code, is to represent the agency. And my job only is successful when I have the trust of the entire agency because I do give counsel to all of you. I am a resource to minimize legal risk for the agency. That's why I offer these types of trainings. That's why I have an open door policy to talk about any ethical concerns. If you don't feel comfortable speaking to me, one of the resources in this packet that is identified is Association of Washington Cities and primarily the Municipal Resources and Services Center has a hotline that you can and Services Center has a hotline that you can call and ask questions. I don't know if any of you have ever taken them up on that, but they have a website that's very robust and can answer questions through a chat feature, and then they also have a hotline. I do want to flag, the majority of the MRSC employees will call me if you call them, because they want me to know that you were asking a question. And whenever you make a question to MRSC, it is public information. They want me to know so that I can further facilitate getting you the answers that you need. They'll give you the answers, but we all work as a team in the, the legal community in the state of Washington. Again, if you're going to go this route, we ask that you keep us all in the loop, avoiding that no surprise, no surprise rule, by ensuring that we are all on the same page with regards to whatever legal risk issue or whatever legal concern that you have, so that we can make sure we're all rowing in the same direction. The last slide here is a bit doom and gloom, but we include it because it's important for you to acknowledge and recognize. So you have personal risk to the extent you take actions that violate procedures, codes, and laws. So even though you may be acting as you feel in the, within the scope of your employment or your role as a city council person, if you choose to act in contravention of any of the items I've hit in the training, you potentially could have personal legal risk in the event litigation arises from that choice. So for example, if you were to take action in contravention of tonight's training with regards to conflicts of interest, for example, if there were a question of a contract that you authorized, or a conversation you had and a benefit you gained, the fact that you've had the training would eliminate your ability to have sort of a good-faith misunderstanding defense, and you could potentially have personal liability as opposed to indemnification through the city for your cost of defense. You may have to hire a personal attorney as opposed to an attorney funded by the city. This is important to understand particularly as it relates to personnel-related matters, because your role as it relates to personnel is very distinct from the mayor's, and the training that you've been given here and the policies and procedures in place through our personnel manual and other things dictate the, the expectations we have for conduct. And when there's a deviation, this rule kicks in, and there is potentially personal liability. It is no longer something that you're doing while acting within the course and scope of your role as a council member. So that's why understanding your role, asking questions when a part of your role is unclear is so imperative, because we want to ensure that you are afforded a defense in the event you make a good-faith misstep. All right. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, I think I went over, but again, this is, this is intended to be a dialogue, not just tonight, but ongoing.
I've got a question. I'm curious about MRSC and their legal services. How far do they go in assisting? I mean, are they just looking up case law and providing that to you, or are they providing an interpretation of case law?
So, yeah, that's a great question. It really depends on the, the nature of the question, because they have a database of resources available to them, and they have legal staff, a number of attorneys who are, or who have practiced in-house at agencies. And so they are capable of providing you with legal advice on a wide variety of issues, both from their own knowledge and from the database of previously answered and researched answers. So I, I find their answers specifically to elected officials to be pretty in-depth, and citing to most recent case law on that particular topic. They are very quick to, to notify you that they are not your attorney and that what they're providing you is not legal advice. And there are some issues, you know, it's not surprising, I'm sure, that there are many gray areas in the law, and they will very specifically say, please consult your city attorney as to your agency's preferred approach to this particular topic when there's a gray area. And to be frank, there are times when I've disagreed with the advice that they've given, and as have my colleagues, but that's just the nature of, of the practice of law. You know, there, there's not always one answer to certain legal issues.
It's a great resource that staff utilizes.
That was my next question, is it available for staff as well?
That's, that's, that's how it's commonly used, is, it's a staff resource, city attorney resource, you know.
There's only certain features that are behind any sort of a paywall. For the most part, it's all open to the public, for anyone to use, so.
Interesting. Thank you.
Yeah. It's a state-funded agency, so.
Councilmember Chang, go ahead.
Are we allowed to contact you directly, either by phone or email?
Yes. My practice is, I will remind you that I'm not your attorney, I'm the council's attorney, and so to the extent you have a legal question that would implicate any issues with conflict of interest, I would say, this is not a confidential information, or the conversation, and I would be sharing it with everyone else. There's no expectation of privacy, I guess, is another way of saying that. So, you know, I have worked with agencies where we have budget constraints with regards to my costs, and so we always keep an eye on that as we do with the resource available to all staff as well. But I think it facilitates a better open dialogue and better relationship to have that, that policy in place, so, yes.
As you and I are aware, who've been around for a little while, Charlie doesn't work for free, so we want to try to limit that, those questions and comments, and funnel them particularly through myself or the clerk's office if we can, to get those answers so that we're all getting the same information. And past, and it isn't my practice, but as you know, past administrations have had a routing system and a ticket, and nobody could talk to the attorney until the mayor approved the ticket. I don't want to go to a cumbersome process, but if, if the attorney's bill gets out of control.
That was my understanding, that you needed to get a routing number either from the mayor.
Oh, I see.
We don't, we.
So that's why I've never contacted you.
Oh, okay. No, and, and there are absolutely circumstances where you would want to contact me directly, because if there's a conflict with regards to something that the mayor has done, you'd want to come to me. Again, I would have a conflict of interest, I would not be able to represent you in that, the council in that, but I would be able to set up the system in place for everyone to have attorneys and be protected, so, yeah.
I'm just going to circle back to my first question. If you contact MRSC, how long does it take for them to, to work with you? I mean, is it, it's probably not real time, but is it, is it a?
Sometimes.
Yeah, they have a phone number, yeah. I mean, you can call them in real time and get an answer on the phone, just depends on the complexity of the question. I'd say the longest I've ever waited for a response is a week.
Okay.
But yeah. And that was a super complex, can you give me all the examples of this? So for example, the conversation we recently had about the vacant property tax, they have a whole page, I think I included it in the materials, they have a whole page of what all the other cities have done with regards to vacant property tax. So they can give you that information immediately, they've already developed a page, whereas others they'll have to research.
For those attending the conference next week, there's a session about, that's called Ask MSRC.
Yeah.
Given every conference, so it's a great, it's a great session. You should learn more about it.
Thank you.
You ready to move on to something a little more exciting?
Yikes.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. We are, have another discussion item, and we've got some cool maps, I thought we would maybe step away from the dais and have Dennis walk us through, these are 60% design, is that what it is?
Yes, that's correct. So this is the Bethel Phase 1 project with the Salmonberry and Blueberry roundabouts. And so previously, we were here with the 30%, so now we are at 60%, and we are looking for consensus before we move to the 90%. This is the time for comments. The layout of the road, as we discussed last time, is not going to change at this point. There's things that I see, I'm interested in hearing things that you observe and any questions that you might have. So we have the visuals, I'll leave it up on the screen for the public, but.
I think it'd be beneficial for you guys to walk down, look at the maps, because in the next month, we're going to be bringing a, a contract to advance to 100% design, and we want.
Anything that we write in RPO, Brandy can ask for. It's public document. That's why I was like, this is crazy. That's why I put right there in front, so he doesn't think that we're.
What's that?
So this is Salmonberry.
You could, but she has to write to ask for it.
We're missing, we're missing a building. This is the future. I'm sorry. So right there is where the people have the property. So we are.
So you're making, we're on the microphone, so we have a comment about a turnpocket right here, which, so they could access here.
Is this access, no, this is the back of the building, so there, you know, access from Salmonberry here to this parking lot here.
I'm going to come over on your side.
This is the building at Salmonberry.
Yes.
Bethel.
Yep.
There's no plan for.
Does that look like a building too?
So that, they'll have access here. This is access for, this building's here.
These are forward.
Yes, so this, this parking lot here can do a left turn right now, and Commissioner, or, sorry, Councilmember Fenton asked if we could do a turnpocket here, so it's wide enough for a car to do a left turn. So once the Home Depot sites developed, this is going to change, and so it will be right out only. But at that time, it's anticipated that there'll be access on this side, possibly. It comes up right here in the front. Yep.
So this is a driveway here?
This is a driveway.
This is a driveway.
Oh, and they might have access here, that's what that looks like. It's hard to see, but there is access. Yes.
Looks like a services type of road or.
Well, yeah, what's this here, is this another lot?
That's another building.
That is a good, is that like the new, the rebuild of.
Yeah, and we do have all the devices now that are showing. It'll be, it'll be similar to.
So if you come down this way, you have to go all the way down here and turn around to go here?
You gotta go down the next roundabout. It's similar to Borgon Drive.
This is.
We do well on the gateway, but it's just adding cost maintenance.
Yeah, no, I get, I just see that, I've seen it fail.
This is where it failed.
This would be a, this would be a very busy, this would be a busy.
Let's, let's, now we bother to look at this, let's go back out. We're not capturing.
Everybody get a good, good idea of what you're considering.
You want me to turn it on, or do you know, or see it off?
Well, actually.
Within the next, we're going to be negotiating.
You gotta wait, you gotta wait.
Get yourself three or four times that way.
Okay, guys, let's, let's bring it back up here. So, so why this is an important step is, is we're about to bring to you guys the 100% design. And so while the road profile isn't going to change, we do want your guys' feedback on, on what you see in, in the project. So maybe we just, just go down the, down the dais if you, with each of you, if you have your comments, your thoughts. Do you want to start it off?
Sure, I was talking with Eric about the vegetated median and whether we're, whether we can sustain that. I know that, that Tremont as a gateway to the city, we've got a, a contract for people to maintain that, but, but is it sustainable for us to look at a grassed me, or a planted median the entire length of the project?
Question.
And, and what?
It's much more attractive, but you're right, it has an expense.
Yeah, and what could be done that's, you know, not vegetated, but also attractive? Like what other options are there out with pavers or what have you?
You capturing this, Dennis? Okay. Fred, do you, any, any other thoughts?
Yeah, I'm just curious about the outreach that was made to some of the commercial places like China Sun, for example. I am concerned about the lack of access from there directly. I understand that you know we have traffic control, but we have to go to veneers. I don't know about, but I still think I'm a little concerned about the fact of the business.
And, and that aspect of the profile isn't something that, that we can change at this point. And when we did this cor, the entire corridor study, this entire corridor is intended to have, otherwise, we, we can't afford a four-lane road, this, and we, the only way this is going to function properly is to have no left turn movements and to move cars through the roundabouts.
So can I just follow up on his comment? Is that an ASHTO guidance, Dennis, that we can't break that median? Were you following?
Sorry, I was writing, and so the question was about the businesses and the access.
I think, you know where China Sun is?
I'm not familiar with it.
It's, it's, it's a restaurant in the middle, in the middle of the block.
So the question is asking if you could have a break in the median?
And make a left turn, and left turn movements.
Yeah, or is that guided by the highway manner?
I will.
And we can do anything you, you guys want, but is, there's a cost to that in the additional right-of-way, because you're going to have a turnpocket in the middle of it, and we're going to have to take more roadway, and.
But I think that's a good idea to go on a left turn.
It looks like Development Director Bond is online and has his hand raised to that comment.
Mr. Bond, go ahead.
Yeah, so that isn't an ASHTO standard or any federal standard, it's a transportation modeling standard. And so in order for the roadway to meet a level of service D, which is our adopted level of service standard, by introducing turning movements where people are crossing oncoming traffic lanes to, to make the left turn, you are causing the level of service to drop below a level of service D, which triggers the need for that additional travel lane, which is the four-lane road that the mayor was mentioning.
Okay.
Cost prohibitive. Yeah, not a safety issue. Councilmember Rosebitt?
Fred, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay. Personally, I like the designs, I like the idea of having to turn right to make a left to go down, and I'll explain that reasoning. Having just recently taken the ARP Safe Driver course, I will tell you that at a certain age, the majority of your accidents are from left, people trying to cross a median to make a left-hand turn, and also trying to merge. This takes, for a certain population, this takes care of that because they're turning right. So I'm all in favor of the design we're looking at, and as, I know we'll look more at access points, but to put in a turn lane right in the middle of it would, I think, defeat the purpose. That's my opinion.
Orsi?
I didn't originally have anything, other than Councilmember Deener's comments brought up some thoughts for me. So I, I think I would prefer vegetative of, of some kind, and hopefully, if we continue growing that, maybe we'll fund something to internally take care of that here at the city. But I really, an option I don't want to see is like what they have going on in Bremerton as you enter off of the highway where they rocked it, and then vegetation still comes up in between there and it looks awful. So I would rather vegetation or complete pavers of, of some sort, or stamped concrete.
The point, it isn't wide enough to put street trees in the, unlike Tremont's got a much wider median, that isn't big enough for trees to survive in it.
Right.
It, it, this, this corridor isn't.
But I really, uh, an option I don't wanna see is, like what they have going on in Bremerton, as you enter off of the highway where they rocked it, and then vegetation still comes up in between there and it looks awful. So I would rather vegetation or complete pavers of, of some sort, or stamped concrete.
The point, it isn't wide enough to put street trees in the, unlike Tremont's got a much wider median, that isn't big enough for trees to survive in it.
Right.
It, it, this, this corridor isn't. The discussion to this point is some, a ground cover could be the same mountain laurel or something like it.
Yeah, I'm down.
Currently is what, you know, we're envisioning. It's something that's green year-round, it's hardy, and it gets, as it gets, as we're seeing it, the first few years, the attention it needs to keep, to establish and not let the weeds established is critical, okay? And it doesn't need as much effort as that gets, you know, established. You still need some, because otherwise it's things under, you know, Scotch broom and other undesirable things will grow into it, and then we're doing what Gig Harbor did or, um, Bremerton. You can't spend a million dollars on landscaping and then not maintain it. Yeah, you know, so I, you're, you're, your point is well taken, you know, if, if we're gonna do this, we gotta commit to funding the maintenance of it. That's, that's an absolute. Otherwise, we don't, otherwise, we shouldn't do it.
Yeah, and just to be clear, this, even though I went first, this was an idea that Eric wanted to talk about, and I think it's worth... Well, so what is our budget? Sorry, John. What is our budget with Tremont?
Thirty thousand a year, I think?
I'd have to look at it.
For the maintenance?
Spitball, yeah.
Yeah, we just did it, yeah, it was not much above that.
Yeah, it's thirty thousand-ish, maybe slightly more.
Last month, we approved it.
Yeah.
The maintenance, the maintenance, is that including the downtown area too?
It might include other areas too. It's, it's still, it's about thirty grand, and you're right, it's gonna add another something to that, and so I'm gonna come back to you.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Unless it's about...
It's about vegetation.
Oh, go ahead.
My only comment is, uh, we have a luxury on Tremont of being a four, four-liner. Here, we have two-liners, so if somebody's doing maintenance, they're gonna be blocking a lane or be not as safe as they could be. That's my two cents. Thank you, thanks for indulging me, Barry.
But it's beautiful. That is a valid point, 'cause you have to do traffic control as you're doing it. So, um, Councilmember, John?
Jay stole my thunder, um, in somewhat, you know, my, my main goal on this is to move traffic as quickly as possible, and if we've got vegetation that we're going to have to be maintaining there, that's gonna be a problem. I also wanna make sure that we're as safe as we can be. I don't like to turn lane bump outs in here. Number one, it's cost overrun. Number two, that increases the chances for accidents to happen in this process. I know it's a little bit inconvenient sometimes to go around, around about, go north, to go south, and go south to go north, but ultimately, it's about moving people as safely as we possibly can, and I like this, this presentation.
And efficiently. Remember, this is a complete street. It's bike lanes, sidewalks, all of those amenities. There are street trees to the sides, but, but not in the middle. We do need to have more conversation about that greenery in the middle, but it's gotta be nice. I, I, I completely agree with you there. Heidi, go ahead.
And with, I'll just say something really quick, with the greenery, you can get some shrubs that are very low maintenance, and they're just a bunch of shrubs.
It's not so much the shrubs and the plants, there, there's some weeding, it's the trash that, that catches in the vegetation.
Yeah.
That, that is, I think they spend more time handpicking the trash that hangs up in, whether it be shrubs or bushes.
I, I would, I would point out too, that at the ninety percent levels typically when we get to the landscape detail, so we, we will have some time to come back to that point.
Um, I'm, I was wondering about pedestrian lights. I don't see any lights, and as, maybe by blueberry and all that, it seems like, um...
It's a complete street, we will have full illumination and, and...
Well, yeah, but are we gonna have traffic lights for pedestrians walking across? We don't even have them downtown very well, and even at that roundabout down there, so I'm just curious, will we, I think we should implement the, um, safety of, you know...
You're talking about the high intensity beacon?
Yeah, you can push a button and it goes and you walk across, yeah, visible stuff, especially at night on this area. But, um, and then my other one is, yeah, I'm, especially with that, uh, the, the, by Salmon Berry and Bethel, that, what did it got, about eight, no, I mean, excuse me, about four or five retails in there, uh, and they got two driveways, and then one you have to take a left turn, and then one you can, so you, I mean, you can only take a right turn on one of them, 'cause you can't even go through the roundabout. And I think a turn pocket right there to take a left turn would be great, because otherwise, you're just what, you're going out from that, um, retail place, and, you know, you're going super fast so you can make it across. And I don't know, you might say the studies, but that would be, um, great. I don't think you have to go all the way down, take another turn, especially right there within that vicinity, you know, that retail.
Appreciate the comment, and then we'll have the engineers about, we gotta make sure it's safe. That's, that's the, the, uh, so, again, the streetlight comment, though, made, triggered something with me. I think a few of our streetlights on Tremont are located too close to the roundabout, and they should be back of the side, they should've been put back on the sidewalk, and so we're continually dealing with cars driving too fast in the roundabout, taking out our streetlights. So let's make sure that the...
We flagged that.
The streetlights end up far, in particular, at the tail end of that roundabout, where they're coming out of, you know, that those things are located more strategically, 'cause we're, man, we're replacing streetlights all the time. And a lot of times, insurance is paying for it, but in the meantime, um, we're without a streetlight, so, Eric?
Yeah, um, so I have the privilege of driving the entire county, every city, every county, pretty much every day, whenever I want, and I, and I see every city and every county putting in all these roundabouts, super nice roadways, it all looks beautiful going into it. Silverdale's a great example, and they can't maintain it. No, no one has been able to maintain it. Bremerton put in a ton of money, the county did, um, and now it's just weed eaters, like you're cutting a retention pond. That's not acceptable. I would really, really hate to see vegetation going down the middle of this road. I don't think we'd have the irrigation for it, we don't have the roadway to maintain it. I understand that we have time to talk about the other ten percent for the details, but that's one I think that we can just wipe off right away. Pavers, I'd rather see something that separates the two lanes, you know, like stamped concrete whatnot, but that's kinda important, it's just, uh, appearance to the city means a lot to me, and currently, we're just, we're trying to staff a Parks Department, we don't have the resources for that, to try to get into that. Real quick, um, oh, the sidewalks that are all going in, who's gonna be responsible for maintaining those? Would it be the property owners? Now...
Typically, our code says that the, in front of a commer- well, actually, our code says every, property owner's always responsible for the sidewalk. We don't, we don't enforce the, in the residential areas, and commercial areas, that is the expectation, that, um, you know, that the sidewalk belongs to that business.
Yeah.
Typically, in most, you know, this is a unique scenario where we're adding sidewalk...
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, the, the blueberry apartments, they've given us money in lieu of, they would've been required to build that sidewalk, and it's in their sidewalks.
Yeah. The, um, if anybody wants to see how those bike paths work with the kickouts, when you go to the intersection and you get back on, um, go to Ridgeline. Tremont, yep, that's pretty cool, it, they work, they work fantastic, you know? Jay's not a big fan of them, they, they work really well. I see people use them and, um, but Jay also had them, you know? So, no, just, uh, I think it looks great. I like the way they accommodated the homes, unfortunately, with development and whatnot. There's some struggles, but I think, I, I like it.
Second round?
Sure. You went first, for sure.
Yeah, um, we can go back around. Um, I, I like the idea of considering maybe some unique hardscapement that recognizes our maritime history. You know, maybe, like Eric mentioned, stamped concrete, but also, you know, maybe it could be something that prevents people from wanting to blow across the median if, if they feel like they can.
It needs to be robust.
It needs to be robust, but like, you know, what about sculptures or something like that, you know, made out of three-quarter inch steel or something? Just something that's, what, what is out there that is kind of innovative and would be exciting that people aren't seeing?
Great.
Are there, I don't know, we need to go in order, that's just...
I just had a follow-up to my prior question, and Dennis, I realize you wouldn't know because you weren't here, but I was curious about the amount of public outreach that had been made to property owners, and I can maybe email Nick, Nick probably knows. Um, you know, did it go by mail, or was it just a postcard? I, I'm sorry, go ahead. Unless you know.
Off the top of my head, I, I know we've had a public, we had a public process in the entire corridor. We've, I believe, done some outreach in this process, and then when we get into right-of-way phase, it's gonna be one-on-one to folks, you know, with a right-of-way agent to, to, you know, talk about the impacts and, and, 'cause we're in places we're gonna need to acquire right-of-way.
My only comment to council is, uh, this is, you know, our first phase, so get those comments out, because how it, how it goes is how it's gonna go for the rest of them, and we wanna do it right, so...
Last, I mean, great, great feedback, I, I, I really, you know, agree with, we've gotta make sure that that's, it's sustainable. And I, I'd love to see greenery there, but it, it probably isn't the right, and, and it saves us a ton of money, not, not to put landscaping in there, and so let's do, it's probably concrete, you know, but let's make it, you know, it could be, they do stamped type, you know, so let the engineers, you know, engineers come back, and, you know, that's, we're gonna get to ninety percent, and we're gonna have another opportunity to see a plan set like this and, and the ideas from the engineer, but it's really, we're, we're driving hard to deliver on this and get this project built as fast as we can, 'cause, um, traffic's bad on Bethel, and we need to solve this. You know, once we get this built, at least you're gonna have a Salmon Berry outlet to get out to Jackson, you know, in, in that direction.
Bob, is there plant plumbing down the center at this point for landscaping?
There would be, yeah. But once again, it's not, there's valid concerns with how are we gonna maintain it? How are, from a traffic control standpoint, we're blocking traffic to pull weeds and to...
No, I understand.
And to pick up garbage.
But I'm also understand there's a cost of putting in that plumbing, and if we can save that cost and push it to another feature, like stamped concrete, for example, or artwork, there's other ways of mitigating traffic.
And making it appealing.
Issues, yeah.
And, and maybe it's a variety of hardscapement types, um, you know, not just stamped concrete, but mix it up, boulders, what have you.
You got it all written down, Dennis?
Sir?
All right.
Call me, I'll design it for you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, let's, uh, let's, let's get on, we've got a, it's a bit more to do here tonight, and I wanna try to get you out of here by nine-thirty. Is my goal, so, I gotta have a goal. All right, Council Committee reports, economic development and tourism, you met earlier this week?
We did. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met on Monday at our regular scheduled time. We had a presentation from KITA. Their Executive Director, Joe Morrison, walked us through some metrics, uh, that they've been working on. We also talked, Director Bond gave us an update on some pre-application meetings around the, um, activation of a space in front of the Port Orchard Mall, um, so that was super exciting to hear him. We also talked about, uh, the city's going to start posting on social media around new businesses. We're, we're gonna work on getting that, uh, done by the city. There's opportunities, so the mayor shared with those of us on EDT. We've secured some space at the farmer's markets, so, uh, I think, he invited us to use it, I would, I, I assume that also goes to everybody else, um, so...
For council, but for city business.
For, for city business, yes, 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 yes. We talked about, uh, Councilmember Fenton brought up the anchor outside of the library, she's gonna do some additional research around that. A meeting that was supposed to happen around our Christmas event, uh, but that got canceled, uh, and to be scheduled at a later date. I have not heard that date yet, uh, of the meeting for the Christmas event, the replacement of chimes and lights, uh, was supposed to happen this week and didn't. And then, pardon, I don't remember who gave the, uh, I think it was Fred, uh, gave an update and thanked, uh, the city for much better communication around road closures and construction that's going on. I'd like to reiterate that as well. The city's really done a great job of, of getting communication out, uh, over the last couple of months. And then, uh, the mayor gave us a quick update on the Marina Pump Station and some activities you may see going on down there that may look like they're not supposed to be happening, but are actually part of the project.
Not a leaky sprinkler or a garden hose.
Yep.
It's a de-watering.
Additionally, our next meeting's July eighth. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hi. Uh, utilities, you met this evening?
We did. I'm gonna make it real quick. We talked the Foster Pilot Project, uh, still a work in progress, and hopefully, uh, we'll be moving forward by the end of this year. We're trying to work up some mitigation possibilities, uh, but it's gonna be, continue to be dicey. Received numerous upgrades on the various wells. We do have a significant increase coming in the Melcher Pump Station, uh, so something that was discussed in 2020, uh, and since then, design inflation and some electrical that needed to be done have, uh, made a significant cost increase, so we'll be seeing that, uh, later on in financial. The Marina Lift Station continues to move forward, slightly behind schedule, but compared to where we were, slightly is not bad. I did ask Dennis, uh, if we could possibly, because a lot of work is below street level, that we could possibly have a drone fly over, that we could possibly see some footage here in the council, uh, but that is not a priority, that is a nice, if we can do it. We are bringing fluoridation, uh, to the, uh, request to the work study. We know we don't have a work study this month, and we'll see how we can fit it in, uh, with our business. Our next, and our next meeting is somewhere down the road. I don't have a date, as opposed to utility. The other, only other item we talked about, uh, was that, uh, we're gonna start, uh, looking at stormwater as one of our projects to look at, and just as we are doing things, just where we stand with stormwater projects, but that's, that's all good.
Your committee typically meets the second Tuesday of the month.
And that's when it will be. I just didn't have the date with me, sir.
All right. The Finance Committee met tonight on a unique night, we normally meet, uh, on the, uh, next week, uh, before the work study, but since there's no work study, we met this evening, so, Mr. Ternary?
Yeah, we had a long, but very informative meeting, as, as was mentioned earlier, went about, what, twice as long as normal, I think. We reviewed sales tax revenues, which remained strong, which is a real positive thing for us. Many of our associate local cities are noticing a flattening in their sales tax revenues, that has not hit us yet, but we are kinda planning for that, in case it does happen. Reet revenue reports are still being updated, so we didn't spend any time on those. We reviewed a couple of main budget amendments that are becoming a full council, June twenty-fifth. First one being pottery, non-motorized improvements. Construction has begun, many of you are aware of that, if you drive that area, it's expected to be done by September first. We're gonna need a budget amendment, uh, of somewhere around a million dollars to, to complete this project. Melcher Pump Station was another big one that we're looking at. This is an update of our water infrastructure systems to a pump station that's over twenty years old. Improvements include a mechanical equipment, new pumps, new controls, a generator, as well as new roof painting and lighting. We're looking at about a five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget amendment, a request for that. Both of those will be coming up at the June twenty-fifth meeting. request for that. Both of those will be coming up at the June 25th meeting, I believe. We also have to briefly discuss a Givens Park update with, for the pickleball, uh, courts, continuation of the next steps of the smart water meter implementation program. And we recently signed the Ruby Creek Sydney Lift Station Agreement, um, so we'll be moving forward with that. Finally, uh, we've reviewed and agreed to bring forward, uh, to council on June 25th, an updated investment policy for the city. Very interesting, very good stuff. Um, what did I miss, fellow finance members?
I don't think you missed anything. There's going to be a lot of color in the budget amendments that are coming because there's a lot of moving pieces. We went through that, uh, in, in pretty good detail, I'd say, so, um, if you have questions about the packet, reach out to somebody on the finance committee because, uh, we've, we've got that level of detail you may be looking for.
Next meeting is the third Tuesday of July.
Sixteenth.
And just, you know, we had a lot of discussion about the, um, the budget process and how projects move forward and it's really complex, but the, the multimodal project in front of the middle schools is a good example. You know, that was in our, uh, transportation plan, but it was just a transport, and, and so that was the, I, the amount that was in the budget. But then, as we moved the project forward, we, well, gosh, we need a sewer line in the ground. And if we're going to do this, we should do that. So the project, the scope of the project has grown and that's why we're seeing a significant budget increase to it is because the last thing we want to do is do all this road improvement and two years from now, come back and cut the blacktop up because we need a water line there and we need a sewer line there. And, uh, so that's, that's why the, the, the scope of the project has changed from what it was initially envisioned, so.
I asked lots of questions around that and better understand that process, especially for those of us who are new, so, I'd be happy to answer any of those questions.
Yeah, and, does he?
Hi, I did for a second. Uh, if, if I may, Mayor, since, since you guys are on the subject of the finance committee and, uh, the council did just discuss the, um, Bethel Phase Project, uh, some of we discussed, the finance committee, depending on the outcome of tonight's discussion, I would add an additional budget amendment, um, for the 25th. So I believe I heard that was supportive and, um, because I'm looking to the finance committee to give me the nod to go ahead and do that.
Yeah, so what Noah's saying there is, the contract to take this to the next level, he, to the 90%, he's going to add that bucket of dollars to the budget amendment on the 25th. It still requires another action, which is the award of the contract that we have to negotiate. But he's, this avoids Noah having to do multiple budget amendments. We know that contract's going to come forward and he wants to get, program those dollars into that budget amendment, so there's no concerns with that. He's going to move forward with that.
I don't know if you can see that nod, but you're getting it, Noah.
Since you men, you mentioned the, um, pottery today, but, um, have you seen the walls going up?
I haven't, not today. I saw the earthwork.
That's good. Oh, yeah, they're both sides going up real quick.
Okay, yeah, I would roll by over the weekend and I, I saw the cuts, but I haven't been by, uh, today. Uh, which committee, transportation meets on the 25th, land use?
We're meeting either the 24th or 27th.
27th was what we landed on.
Is what finally landed on that. We're meeting 27th.
Okay, who, you're chairing lodging tax. Your project's, process is going to start pretty soon.
Probably pretty soon.
Yeah. Uh, sewer advisory committee is June, today?
Yeah, we met today. Uh, basically, we had a, uh, pretty, uh, simple, went down a list of projects, uh, that they're working on replacements. Uh, there was nothing that, uh, were, that were emergency items. Uh, they do have an interesting one on their, uh, network equipment. They have two different systems and so they're trying to integrate them, uh, at some point in time, which will be a huge savings, uh, down the road, but you got to pay the money up first. Uh, we're looking forward to our meeting on the night, on the 10th of September. Uh, we're looking at the budget and ERU counts, which I believe Noah will probably see before us. And, uh, we had a discussion again on the Marina Pump Station, so that one seems to be always on everybody's radar screen. Uh, we had one on lactate disposal, which was more of a communication issues. It's kind of a triangle between us, uh, waste management and, um, West Sound Utilities. And so Dennis is following up on that, uh, to make sure that, uh, we're getting all the bang for the buck. Uh, we're basically saying, uh, we want to make sure that, uh, waste management is doing what they're supposed to be doing and that will help by having a little bit better communications with, uh, West Sound Utilities. But there, we're both in, in sync on that. Next me-
I think that, it's called leach aid.
Leach aid, okay. Um, and, uh, like I said, 10th of September at 3:00 PM and, uh, moving forward.
Right. Mayor's report, uh, first is there's no work study next week since, uh, many of us are going to be at the AWC Conference. Let's talk about the City Hall remodel. Uh, John asked about that earlier and you put a tool in place to allow us, for us to conduct the meetings remotely, but I'm looking through you guys for direction. I'm going to recommend we go remotely and I'll explain to you why. Uh, so next week, we start moving in downstairs and the following week, uh, the week of our next council meeting, they will start demo here and in the court. This room, they're, they're, they're working faster, they're going to, the courtroom isn't available to them in this first phase, okay? So Mondays and Tuesdays, this will be the courtroom, okay? So it could be made available to you for Tuesday nights. We could accommodate that. But the condition in here is going to be no heating and air conditioning system. We do have windows. Um, there will be, uh, temporary lighting strung in here. There'll be no carpet and so the acoustics probably won't be as what we would want them to be. Uh, and there'll be scaffolding around the room, so.
So let's do it here.
So I just want to set the expectation, what the room's going to look like. Um, we can accommodate the public aspect of it. We're going to put, we, we would put this Zoom cart where the ship used to be in the lobby and put some chairs down there for the public to, to allow that interaction as well as the, the Zoom capability, but if somebody could walk in. But with that said, you, this will be a construction zone in here and we, we can make it work if that's, if it's really important to you to be here in person. It's your call, so, Councilmember.
Mayor, so I know we approved it through remote through September. Is that what you would, the expectation at this point?
Well, I'll, I'll come back if it's, I, I, I hope so.
Okay.
You know, it's construction.
So we only have one meeting in August, I believe. So we're looking at approximately six meetings, seven meetings.
Five.
Maybe seven.
Yeah, six or seven meetings, probably.
I would be okay with going remote next week, next meeting on the 25th.
Are you referring just the one meeting?
No, all, all, through deroration.
Through deration and-
I'd be okay with that.
Of the construction period. Other, I've seen some heads nod to that. Anybody concerned with meeting remotely?
I'm not concerned at all. Selfishly, it helps me a lot because I'm out of state for work for a week and, I mean, I have vacation planned. I can go online throughout the whole thing, so selfishly, it kind of helps me out.
I think remotely is much more convenient and working through a, uh, construction zone is not the most-
Ideal.
Safe and/or-
Trigger health issues with people.
Not, not the best, best outlook.
I like to meet in person, but I will do Zoom. Now, my question is, I didn't know that, well, what's all going on in this room? I mean, I knew the carpet, but that's it.
Well, we are getting a new heating system.
In here.
Okay, just like the rest of the building, so we're going to, the gas boilers are being disassembled. That's one of the first things they're doing, so there's, uh, similar downstairs. They're basically like a mini-split. Each space is getting these heating units, electric heating units that get installed. So there's going to be scaffolding in here for them to work upon that ceiling and install these heating units. I don't know what, uh, what exactly they look, they look like. The fluorescent lights are, are going away and LED lights are being put throughout the building. Um, so that's happening up here in this space also. Um, we're painting the walls and we're replacing the carpet, so that's what's happening in this space. So lighting, heating, um, the windows have already been done, um, the carpet and paint.
And the court being in here.
And the, and the, well, the court won't be in here when you're in here, but-
No, no, what I'm saying is, you know, it's still-
Because the court has to operate, so we're going to make it work for them on Mondays and Tuesday. But you guys do have other options, so. So I'm hearing remote and I, I encourage you, while you're walking out tonight, walk downstairs. It looks fabulous. Um, the only things that are left to do are, um, the glass, uh, at the customer service counter and the base, and the base molding. Um, and we're moving in next week and I can't wait. Um, I'm tired of working out of conference rooms and wherever. As, as they work on the site, you know, we, just like every other builder, had to comply with state energy code, okay? So the, don't be concerned when you see the siding. It's supposed to look, it's got a, each, each butt joint, we did, it isn't screwed up, okay, because-
There's a gap.
There's a 3/8 gap on every butt joint, okay? And it's intended to breathe. Our water, water protection is the gray membrane and then there's four inches insulation go on top of that and then the siding gets mounted on that and it's, it's in, it's supposed to have the gaps, so as water gets in there, the insulation can dry back out. It's a special type of insulation. I've been assured that's the way it's supposed to be.
No, no plate behind the, the siding between the gaps?
No.
That's how my house is built.
It's got a, it's got to breathe. The air's got to travel through it, so.
Okay.
I didn't, you know, I know you'll see it on social media. We screwed up the project. No, we didn't. It's supposed to look like that. Yeah, so, all right, we closed on 7:30 Prospect, so we're proud owners of the building over there and, uh, and when I, when I get back from the conference, I, I tend to meet up with Holly and, and start talking to her, what the future, uh, with the county and, and all that looks like, so, um, KRCC, the regional funding. We were awarded 600 and how many? 675, something like that, for Bethel Lund. So the intersection in front of Port of Iarta, we got the design dollars for that, so.
Nice.
It's a huge victory.
Kudos to staff.
Yeah, so, so we succeeded there. Um, so it is, it is just to design and right-of, and right-of-way dollars.
So we're not getting constructed for 60s.
That one's going to be, I don't know, 5 million or so. We get, so one thing at a time. We got to build this one first and the two other roundabouts, but that's the next project after that, so. Um, City Vision, you got an email today from AWC, read it. The city, and the link on City Vision Magazine, there's an article about downtown Port Orchard and our sea level riot projects and I was really proud of that, so. Read, read that. It's a digital magazine from Association of Washington Cities. Um, there's a Juneteenth celebration next Wednesday at Evergreen Park in Bremerton, 10:00 AM. Many of us are going to be at the AWC Conference, but if anyone wanted to attend that event and read a proclamation on behalf of the city, uh, we'd happy to set you up with that and I could let the organizers know. They reached out and I said I unfortunately couldn't attend, so. So, yeah, it's in Bremerton on Wednesday at 10:00 AM at Evergreen Park. Um, I, I want to share, so kudos that, uh, Joe Morrison, uh, KITA Executive Director, shared with me, a comment about Nick Bond and his staff, uh, recently, so, um, Joe shared with me that, uh, Bob Geit of, at Blue, Blue Architecture, um, who's the architect on the Mika House project. Um, he know, he noted that in some jurisdictions, he might not have been able to get this project off the ground, but Port Orchard was willing to think, think about it, even though they had never done anything like it before. Port Orchard looked at what the applicant wanted to do, staffed, asked questions and came up with a way that worked with, that will ultimately provide increased housing downtown with more affordability for youth and in a project that revitalizes a derelict building. So, so many times we hear the criticism and somebody in the industry, um, saying good things about our staff. I just wanted to share that. So way to go to Nick and your staff. I know you're still online. Um, we're, uh, we've got a rock in front of the library, uh, on the transit property, um, in front of the library, and we have a plaque that we're going to unveil on July 19th at 2:00 PM to commemorate John Claus's 41 years of service as a city council member. So please put that on your calendar. I'd love to see all of you guys there and, and thank John for his service to Port Orchard, 41 years.
What was the date on that again?
July 19th, 2 o'clock. Derek Kilmer is going to come and say a few words. Um, oh, uh, I'm required to report on, uh, updates to job descriptions. We made on minor updates to the patrol officers' job descriptions, you know, we've added additional levels of management, so some of the, this is reflecting the current duties that these officers do. All right, last thing, the history lesson. Got some good stuff. 50 years ago, in 1974, the city council awarded the contract for the reconstruction of Sydney Avenue from Tremont to Division, so County Courthouse all the way out to Division. And it then included the construction of sidewalks on one side of the street. Anybody want to guess 50 years ago what that project cost to rebuild the road and build sidewalks on one side?
150.
150,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, only 76,744 dollars.
4 years?
Wow.
You're a low, low person.
Okay, 75 years ago in 1949, the mayor attended a meeting regarding the discontinuation of, uh, ferry service from Manchester to Seattle. So until night, until 75 years ago, we had Manchester, now, a letter of protest was sent by the city pointing to the fact that 22,000 residents of South Kitsap were without service to Seattle. Two years later, service from Southworth to Seattle was started, so I don't know if it was from our advocacy or, or not, but I thought that was interesting. Um, 100 years ago in 1924, the matter of leaks in water mains caused by logging trucks was, uh, considered, uh, was considered and the clerk was directed to send bills to the, for damages to the water main on our streets to two, uh, individuals. The Lumberg Brothers got a bill for $10 and Arthur Moore got a bill for $10. So the logging trucks were damaging our roads and our water mains, so that concludes-
That's a lot, 100 years ago.
100 years ago, $10, might have been a lot more. Um, to your question about administrative fee, it's 10%. Noah sent me a message to that.
I appreciate that.
Um, department heads, there aren't too many of you left. Dennis?
Uh, just confirming that that is correct amount, 648,750 dollars was awarded to Port Orchard for the Bethel Lund Intersection Improvement, which is slated for 2028 for the funding year. So, uh, just other quick updates, uh, we are filling positions. The mayor's been busy approving job descriptions. You approved the reorg just a few weeks ago and we are already underway and we have started filling those positions.
That's it, thank you. People to get the work done. Ms. Archer?
Uh, nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Because you, because you hogged the whole meeting. Ms. Wallace?
I don't have anything to report tonight, thank you.
All right, we're to our second citizen comment period. Is there anyone wishing to address the council? Come on up. Identify yourself for the record.
I, I believe Director Crocker might have had, he's got his hand raised.
Okay, hold on a second here. I, I'm not, Noah's not, uh, showing on the screen up there, so. Yeah, so, go ahead, Noah. We're not seeing, there, now we see you.
Okay. Well, I raised my hand very politely. I thought that was the way to do it, but, um, also, also- Okay, also Nick Bond's also on the call. He might have some, uh, comments here. Um, since we do not have work stay next week, uh, I have a special request for the remaining council members who are not in the finance committee. Please take a look at the, the finance committee meeting. It was a little bit, a little bit long, uh, but it was a good discussion on the budget amendment that will be coming forth on the 25th, um, as well as a good discussion on the investment policy, which I intend on bringing on the 25th, so, uh, if you guys have a chance to review that, you might have some questions next week for me or your other council members, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bond, if you're there, if you want to, do you have a report you want to give?
Nothing to report.
Okay, all right. Come on up.
I only come up when it's late.
That's all right.
My name's Lila Mason. I came to Kitsap County as a hospital corpsman in the Navy and my husband and I went to nursing school on our GI Bill. I worked five years in critical care at Harrison Hospital and almost 28 years as a high-risk labor and delivery nurse at the University of Washington Medical Center. And, um, I just want to say, when you guys were revising your guiding principles, I realized that they were more than just something you recited, that you really put thought and commitment to them. And, um, so I am offering you, uh, um, uh, ex, example of inclusion. I brought a wheelchair and if at the close of the meeting, someone would volunteer to be in the wheelchair and get into and out of the bathroom, I know that you addressed the handles, but it still is, uh, um, block for someone in a wheelchair. And so I would just like to give you and a chance to see what that feels like. just like to give you and a chance to see what that feels like. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right, anybody online, use the raise your hand feature and we'll bring you into the meeting.
Scare them away.
Scare them away, okay, we are going to, um, conduct our executive session here in this chamber, um, because of the, um, the back room being used as office space, it's not conducive, so unfortunately, we're going to need to, uh, to, for you to leave the, the chambers, because we're going to conduct an executive session in here.
Can we give her a, can we give it two minutes?
Okay, we'll take, we'll take a five-minute break and then go to our executive sessions.
Yeah, we'll help you.
Do you want to announce it first or do you want to come back and announce it? We're going to go into an executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one, ten subpart one, subpart I, uh, pertaining to legal risk for approximately-
Twenty minutes?
Twenty minutes, uh, with no action to follow.
We might have to.